Good morning and welcome to our work session at the Lillman Exchange. So I have a few housekeeping items which I would like to go over. One is please silence your cellphones, which is usual protocol for us. Restrooms are located to my left. And for those of you in the audience that may wish to offer public comment, there's comment cards behind me by the front door. And we'd ask you to fill one of the comment cards out if you wish to speak. Next, for those that are at the presenter's table, when acknowledged, make sure to press your microphone button to start speaking and then push it again when you're done talking. This will prevent audio feedback issues because we are recording this meeting. So next, and finally commissioners, we will be doing the same for you. We'll be pushing your microphones on and off. When you've, if you want to speak, I'll say, hey, yes Commissioner Justice, you're up, and then you'll push this microphone on and off. So I think it's similar to what we do at PSTA, so you're used to it. What's that?
Commissioners don't need to push the button.
Commissioners are live?
They'll take care of it over here.
Oh, okay, that wasn't on my script, so you're live. So be careful what you say.
They'll control it. So when you go to speak, they'll turn yours on.
Wow, this is very sophisticated. Okay. Anyway, thank you all for being here, and I believe Barry said that Lourdes will be kicking things off.
Button to turn it on, there you go. Lourdes Benedict, Assistant County Administrator. And first, I can't tell you how excited I am personally to be here and share all of the things that we've been doing actually in the last couple of years and to have this great team here as well. Today, we're really going to focus on the adult behavioral health system. If we did adults and kids, we could probably be here for several weeks straight. So I just want to make sure everyone understands the focus today is on adults. This is not an issue that we can work on alone. We have some partners here with us who we work with very closely. And let me go ahead and first introduce our Pinellas Integrated Care Alliance, which are basically, for the most part, the funders of the mental health system here in Pinellas. So first, we have Chief Deputy George Stephan from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. And I got to tell you, when we started this, the sheriff has been right on board since day one, working with us with his mental health units that he has. So that has been huge for us. Next, we have Linda McKinnon, who is the CEO of Central Florida Behavioral Health Network, which is all of the state funding comes through Central Florida. She's also on our PICA team. Up next, we have Dr. Yuli Cho, who is the Director of the Department of Health, great partner. And you all know Daisy Rodriguez, our Human Services Director. And then also speaking today, we have Gail Rider here, who's the Vice President of the BayCare Health System, who's going to be talking about some initiatives we're doing there with other hospitals as well and lots of partners. And up next, we have Barbara Dare, who's the CEO of the Suncoast Center, who is one of our major players in mental health here in Pinellas County. So that's basically the team there. Behavioral health is a huge issue. It's a very important issue. It's also, I like referring to it unfortunately, as a monster of an issue. It's not something that happened overnight, and it's not something that unfortunately, we can fix overnight. I got to tell you, I recently, Daisy and I went and visited Drug Court, I believe it was last week. And I have a little book over there of all the things that I learned, all of the things that I heard. And it is definitely a monster of a program, of a problem. But the things that they are doing there with Judge Farnell, if you have not had the opportunity to go and visit, and she loves to have visitors, I encourage you to do that. I let her know that I was going to bring it up today with the commissioners. But one of the things that she does is she gets from behind the bench, and she goes out, and there was probably about 60 people in the room that are struggling with drug addiction. And she came out and introduced us. I wasn't expecting any of that. But what she said was, "They are here from Pinellas County, and they have your back. They have your back." And that's the way I feel every day when all of us come to work. We have the community's back, and this is why we do what we do on a daily basis. So I just wanted to share that with you because it meant something to me. I know that a lot of you are champions of this. Many of you in this room have committed your careers to helping with this issue and are champions in this arena. Today, we're going to discuss what we're currently doing. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. We're going to discuss some gaps. And we're going to try and come up with some solutions and get some feedbacks from you all. So I hope to have a good discussion, so I say we get started. So first slide. I'm very proud of this one, actually. In 2015, actually before 2015, some of you may recall, we had lots of the providers come up to the Board of County Commissioners, and were very upset about some of the funding and some of the reductions in funding. And we have done a great deal of work in Human Services, and Daisy is the lead, on upping some of the money for behavioral health. So you can see this, it basically speaks for itself. For fiscal year 19, we have over $11 million, 7.2 from the general fund. And what I'm very proud of is 3.8 from grant funding. So we're always looking for an opportunity to fix some of the gaps that we have. I'm not going to go over this, these next couple of slides, but I did want to share with you. I know we often talk about what does the state fund? What does the county fund? So we have a chart in here of all of the different programs that we both fund. And Linda McKinnon is going to go over that in a little while as far as the state funding. But you can see some of our partners here that I know that a lot of you are familiar with, PEMS, West Care, Directions for Living, Operation Par, the Public Defender, who we have represented here today, is with us. Suncoast Center, as I told you about before. Bowley, excellent partner that works with us, a lot of housing issues. Center for Rational Living, I can tell you by visiting Drug Court how many times that name came up and the successes that they're having there at the center. Solutions for Behavioral Health, PERC, Vincent House, which I know a lot of you are familiar, great partners of ours. And the list just continues of all the people that we fund and all the folks that we work with. So grand total for Pinellas County between the county and the state of Florida, close to $40 million is what we're putting in this.
A question for you. I know you put down here, ACTS gets $200,000 right from the state, but ACTS doesn't provide services in Pinellas County at this point. They're located there. But I know sometimes our Pinellas County residents go there, but same with Vincent House, they get $508,000, but I think only a small fraction of that, maybe a third of that or a quarter of that actually goes to Pinellas County. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Because that's total state money, and they're in four counties. So would that be accurate, Linda?
No, this, these dollars reflect only what's coming to Pinellas.
And ACTS?
ACTS would probably be the only one because they do take from both Pinellas and Hillsborough into that program.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Welch?
Lourdes, can you characterize the 3.8 million in grants just generally? Is that federal, state, private? How does that?
Federal and state mostly. And Daisy's actually going to go over each of the programs very quickly because we have a lot of them. So you get a flavor of what it is that we're doing and how much it is.
Would you say the majority is federal versus state?
I would say federal.
Okay, thank you.
So that's basically it for the funding. I did want to, I know you're all aware of this, the Pinellas Community Empowerment Team, also known as PSET, also known as our Top 33. We started that a couple of years ago, put it out to bid. And Suncoast Center was the group that we went with along with Bowley. And that has been, I can't stress enough how hugely successful that program has been. I know you've heard me talk about this on a number of occasions. When we did that, when we looked at how much is it costing us now? It was $2.4 million, very conservatively. That number really could have been higher if we had some of the other cost. Thanks to the board who provided close to $1 million, $964,000, we were able to start this program and work with those individuals. And because of the work that Suncoast has done at connecting the dots, right? A lot of this is about connecting the dots with what we do. We were able to do that for $650,000 and take some of that money for our next program that I'll talk about. But basically, those were the highest utilizers of our Baker Act system and of our jail. So we looked at those folks, provide lots of wraparound services. And as far as the outcomes and the successes, we've had a reduction in Baker Act days of 82% with those individuals. That's a huge number. And that's resulted in a cost savings of over $155,000. And another biggie here is we've had a reduction in jail days, 88% reduction, resulting in $199,000 of savings. So we were successful with that, and we had some money, right? Because we were able to connect the dots with things in the community, use some vouchers for housing, et cetera. So we came back to the board and realized that we wanted, what's the next step? Right? So the high utilizers were the toughest to serve in this community. And we knew we had issues with other folks that we weren't able to serve. So in partnership with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office and with Directions for the Living, who are the folks who help the sheriff with that, we created the PIC teams, Pinellas Integrated Care. And that is a cross-section of stakeholders that work with the next layer of folks in our community that the sheriff office constantly gets calls to come to their home to help them with whatever behavioral health issues they may have. So we came to the board and wanted to put some money into that that we had already from PSET. So we added $500,000. The Central Florida came to the table. We put in a grant with the Foundation for a Healthy St. Pete, who also added some money. Sheriff stepped up, added some money. And we created the Pinellas Integrated Care Alliance, which are these folks sitting right here at the table. I really wanted to showcase them and the work that we're doing to make a difference in what we're doing in mental health. We basically, about a year ago, said, you know, we need to step up, be the leaders, and this is what we're doing. So we're looking at all areas in the system. But as far as the people that we're serving in that program, again, if you ever have an opportunity, you want to come sit in on one of those meetings, it's a real eye-opener to see the folks in our community, the case managers, working together to figure out what to do with a person. We've had a 79% reduction in arrests because of this program and a 94% reduction in Baker Acts and detox admissions. Those are some huge numbers because folks are working together and connecting the dots for the folks in our community. So next up, I'm going to have Daisy come up and answer probably some of your questions, Commissioner Welch, regarding the programs and what we're doing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here. I'm Daisy Rodriguez, and I'm the Director of Human Services. And as Lourdes indicated, you know, a lot of the programs that I'm going to talk to you about really come as a result of the hard work of grant awards and solicitation of grants. 35% of the funding, as she indicated, comes from grants. One of the first programs I'd like to showcase is our Cooperative Agreement to Benefit Homeless Individuals. This grant started in 2016, September of 2016, and it really is about wraparound services, peer support, counseling, medication management, for those who are chronically homeless, who are recently housed, and what are the services and the needs that they would need to have in order to maintain stable in their environment. We have served 211 folks thus far. And some of the outcomes, which I think are pretty impressive, is that we have 88% of the clients who have completed a six-month survey, so where are you six months after, have remained housed, which is a huge success. 60% of the clients are still actively engaged and are receiving behavioral health services. And we've also implemented telehealth and telepsychiatry with over 95 sessions to these individuals.
Commissioner Gerard?
So we've been working a lot with Bowley, who's been helping us to house those individuals.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Welch?
Just note on each one, whether it's federal or state.
Sure. So this is a federal grant, and this is through SAMSA.
Thank you.
This is a new SAMSA grant. It's relatively new. It was, we just started it in February of this year. And it's the assisted outpatient treatment, and it's court-ordered outpatient services to individuals who are high utilizers of the CSU, the Crisis Stabilization Unit. We have served thus far nine individuals. These are civil commitments. So these are folks who cannot engage in the community regardless of the number of services or resources that may be available to them. So what we're hoping and expecting out of these outcomes is there are, again, reduction in CSU, a reduction in jail system interactions, and improved social outcomes. And some other programs in Florida and nationally using this AOT model have witnessed exactly that, reduction in jail time and in CSU utilization. Another grant program is our Medication-Assisted Treatment and EAMS, which stands for Access to Increased Mental Health Services. It's also a federal grant through HERSA. And this provides individuals with medication intervention, Suboxone, Vivitrol, and, sorry. Sorry about that. So it's medication-assisted treatment, and there's also counseling involved. And we have served 234 individuals in 2018 with close to 2,500 treatment visits in 2018, and 90% of them are still engaged in medication-assisted treatment. The next grant is through the Department of Children and Families. And it is the Criminal Justice Mental Health Substance Abuse Reinvestment Grant. This provides jail diversion expansion that provides residential placement and treatment, also some employment assistance and for those who have substance abuse and co-occurring diagnosis. We've served 138 individuals since the inception of the program. We have seen 98% reduction in arrests amongst the participants compared to the year prior to the enrollment of the program. And 86% of the participants have had a reduction in risk and improved access to employment, healthcare, and housing and transportation. Our Veterans Treatment Court is grant-funded, and this is involved with veterans who are involved in the criminal justice system who suffer from substance abuse. It is to provide residential treatment services, case management, medication-assisted treatment. We have served 46 veterans. 70%, some of the outcomes are that 70% of the participants have successfully completed their treatment plans. 70% of the successful completers have remained substance-free post-discharge from the program. And 100% of the veterans would recommend this program to someone facing similar charges. And the Adult and Juvenile Drug Court, this is a blended program. So there is some grant funding of $693,455. It's SAMSA. And this is treatment diversion for those who have a substance abuse-related charge. It's a voluntary court supervised for nonviolent offenders. We have served 1,532 clients in FY '18. There was a 58.5% graduation rate, and 84% of the veterans served did not have a re-arrest. And as Lourdes said, when we were there last week, it was really amazing to see the judge in action. And I was really surprised too and taken aback when she was working from, in front of the bench. SAMSA grant for family dependency drug treatment provides substance abuse treatment to parents who are involved in the child welfare system. We've served 62 families, and 0% of the participants have had a new child maltreatment report, instances of termination of parental rights, or have had their children removed during the program enrollment for three months post-discharge. And so we wanted to talk a little bit about some of our top-funded agencies, specifically those, as you saw the chart that Lourdes referenced earlier, those who receive $1 million or more. And so Operation Par, you could see is there is some blended funding here, and they provide inpatient detox, health screening, psychiatric assessments, detox and stabilization. They also work with us on case management on some of our, many of our grants, including our medication-assisted treatment, our EAMS, and our CAVI grant. West Care also receives blended funding, and they run the Turning Point. They are the Public Defender's Jail Diversion Treatment Provider, the Adult and a Dependency Drug Court Treatment Provider, and the Veterans Treatment Provider, as well as the provider for CAVI. And Directions is also blended funding. And Directions for Living is our behavioral health provider. And they do assessment and case management, psychiatric services for Pinellas County Health Program, as well as our healthcare for the homeless and other grants such as CAVI, the assisted outpatient treatment. And PEMS is our Crisis Stabilization Unit, which includes 45 publicly-funded beds for adults here in Pinellas. And they're also part of the Integrated Care Alliance team. They are part of our AOT, our Assisted Outpatient Treatment Grant, and they provide, they are the mental health court liaison. And so we do have some new grants that are just coming on board as well. One is called the Care Team. And this is part HERSA funding and part state funding through ACHA. It's an intervention team aimed at delivering wraparound services around substance abuse treatment to those experiencing an overdose in the ED. So it provides for a warm, excuse me, provides for a warm handoff and linkage to medication-assisted treatment and wraparound services. And we're focusing on the measures in reduction of hospitalization, jail stays, ER visits, and homelessness. The Strategic Information Partnership, we're working with the Florida Department of Health, EMS, USF, and the opioid task force. And this is really to look at opioid trends in order to reduce the impact of opioids in our community and enhance access to treatment. And that group has been meeting with some regularity, I think, on a monthly basis for a little bit of time now. I think they have their draft Phase 1 work plan already in place. Some new grant opportunities is the First Responder. We call it the CARA, Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Cooperative Agreement. And this is to increase, to help increase training, staffing, to provide outreach and engagement into par post-ODs. So folks who are, have experienced an OD or who we know have been in the emergency rooms for ODs, and to help EMS do some more community training on locks and interventions. The Office of Justice Programs, there's a comprehensive opioid abuse psych-based program, which we work with West Care on. And this is to provide transitional housing, substance abuse treatment, and medication-assisted treatment. And the last grant, and these are grants that we have applied for that we're waiting for the award. I'm going to be optimistic. The Integrated Behavioral Health is a HERSA federally-funded grant. It's $145,000 annually, and it will provide for a licensed clinician at the base side clinic where we have our healthcare for the homeless program. And then we want to pilot telepsychiatry services there. So what are some of the lessons learned? Well, we learned that wraparound services really is what works. It's bringing the services to the clients. These are some of the most difficult individuals who face the biggest challenges, and if they could navigate our systems, they would. But by virtue of the fact of their ailments and their illnesses and substance use, they're not able to. So we have found that wraparound services really is a model that we want to continue, as we do grants, we want to continue to strive and build those in. We learned that outreach and engagement takes a long time, and it takes multiple touches, and it takes a while to build trust. Some of these individuals have had horrible, horrible things occur in their lives. So opening up and trusting is not something that comes natural to them. We learned that field-based services, again, bringing the, making it patient-centric. Let's bring the services to the patient as opposed to having them trying to navigate through our systems and figuring, figuring things out. We learned that we should not be limited to business hours because life does take place after 4:00 PM and after Friday evenings. We learned that on-call availability for clients to the provider staff is essential. I know that in PSET, they do that all the time. There's one of the supervisors there that knows folks, almost everybody by their first name. And if they have a difficulty or they run into a challenge, they have cellphone numbers that they can call and actually speak to the person that they have built that relationship with. We learned that long-acting injectable medications work and the universal release of information. So again, working through PSET, we've included this in some of our grants. If anybody who's going to come into that, into that person's, touch that person's care, we have a release form that says, will you allow for all of these agencies who are part of this program, part of this grant, to, that we would be able to share information? We learned that folks need appropriate day and evening activities. We need something for them more to do. Vocational training, some socialized activities. Some of these folks have not been socializing, haven't socialized in a while. They've been isolated. And we want to keep them away from the people, places, and things that have created the situation that they're in. And we learned that working with partners and having an alert system, working with the hospitals, with BayCare Hospital, working with law enforcement through PSET, whenever one of those, PSET clients hits one of those systems, there's an alert, the sheriff's office has been great. There's an alert that pops up to the PSET team so that we know that one of our PSET clients has hit the system. And it triggers then the case manager to go and to provide the follow-up and start immediately working with that individual again to make sure that they remain engaged. So some of the system gaps and challenges we found is that, as everybody has said, Florida ranks 50th in per capita funding. We did not expand Medicaid. There's limited prevention funding for adults. So prevention is a part of, I think, the things that we should be taking a look at. And there's limited availability in the state hospitals. So currently, Pinellas has 21 residents awaiting admission to the Florida State Hospital. There's a lack of central receiving system, and some of the medical transport data and billing is complex. So looking at some of the EMS data, this represents a first transport. So this is EMS picks up anywhere in the county and where they may transport to for behavioral health. PMS inbound clients, so these are transports from the facilities into PEMS by facility. And then we have high utilizers of EMS, of the ambulance. So this represents people who have been picked up 20 times or more with an indication of behavioral health and/or an addiction disorder. And around here, Jim and I have been working, EMS and Human Services have been working at looking at some of those high-utilizer data, trying to figure out if they are clients of ours currently. How can we intervene prospectively? How do we connect them to services? How can we better care coordinate, working along with the Department of Health if they're in our blue card system? And what kind of, what kind of interventions could we possibly come up with to help individuals not use the EMS system?
Daisy, if I can just chime in here a minute? Because, you know, we focus a lot on this data and the negative side of it, I guess? Right? So we had two of the top five individuals left PEMS 70 times in 19 months. So what the team is looking at is why? So they went there, what happened after that? How are we not connecting these folks, right? So that's, that's a bad story, right? That's what we continue to work on. But what Daisy didn't talk about is... But what Daisy didn't talk about is the number of people that we transported once and only once, and they got what they needed, right? So, sometimes, we only focus on the negative. I just wanted to leave that with you, because we're here to fix the problems, right? But we don't always talk about the once that somebody went, was transported, and got what they needed. So, I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
And so, other challenges is that the state data continues to show that in 2017 Baker Acts is still up, and there was a 27% increase in Baker Acts from FY13 to FY17, and we're currently awaiting the new report that's expected sometime this month, indicating the 2018 data. Other systems, gaps, and challenges is the lack of a secure marchman bed or facility, and the jail data has indicated that between May and November, May 17 and November of 2018, over that 19-month period, there were 1,756 marchmen acts that were sent to the Pinellas County Jail, averaging 92 per month. 1,266 were accepted, and 490 were refused for medical concerns and sent to the ER. Sustainability is a large challenge for us, because what happens when those grants run out? Grants are time-limited, as we all know. Under the case of HERSA, very frequently, they do continue to provide grant services, but not so much under the SAMSA grants. So, how do we take a successful program and keep it going forward? And if we're not able to, how, what do we put in place to help those individuals transition to the next level of care that will continue to be able to support them? Often, the county is requested to fill in the gaps in funding to sustain successful programs. I do want to go back to successful programs and grant limitations. The CAVI grant is scheduled to expire this year in September, and Human Services, because of the success of that, has asked it that be considered for a decision package so that we continue serving those individuals with the wraparound services in that model. Psychiatric demand is a huge problem, not only in Florida, but across the nation. There's a national shortage of psychiatric staff, and therefore, wait time for psychiatric evaluation can be 30 days or more. Florida does not have an active health information exchange, so we put a workgroup in place to look at what are some of the obstacles, what are some of the alternatives, what are some of the possibilities? And so, for those who don't know what an HIE is, it's a central repository where agencies who join can upload their information, and those agencies then can draw down our client-level information. There's always the stigma associated with behavioral health treatment and diagnosis that continues to be a challenge in our community. And so, some opportunities that we'd like to highlight or think about is, you know, the marchman beds, and I know Linda's here, and she'll maybe give us an update on what's happening with those 10 proposed ACTS beds. Telehealth and telepsychiatry, continuing to look at the possibility of introducing and expanding on a different type of, or a new, not new, but a different type of a modality, expanding more of that. Street medicine, which is really providing both primary and mental health services out into the streets, literally into the streets, for those individuals who won't come into the clinic, for those individuals who won't come to our mobile medical unit, which travels around the county to provide primary cares and behavioral health screenings. So, we're looking and exploring and talking with Dr. Cho at the Department of Health to see what kind of possibilities might exist around that. We continue to collaborate with the hospitals and looking at discharge planning and looking at their high-utilizers, and trying to determine, again, how can we best intervene so that they're not hitting the emergency rooms? The high-utilizer complex sharing with EMS and Human Services, which I alluded to earlier. Medical transport and the medical clearance process. So, we've been having several meetings around how do we do medical clearance, and when PEMS is transferring someone over for medical clearance, you know, what's a different way of doing that? What might be a better way of doing that? So, we've been meeting for some time with PEMS, Dr. Jamison, and ourselves to look at the current process and to see what other possibilities might exist. We talk about uniform assessment that collects standardized criteria for all of Pinellas County behavioral health partners. So, currently, each of them do their own assessment, you know, they're required by their funders, they're required by their programs, they're required by their regulators and legislator, legislation. So, we're trying to take a look at, how can we streamline that a little bit better? What criteria can we, what common elements can we build into one assessment? And so, that this way, individuals are not being assessed every time they go to a different provider, and that would help with some of that data sharing about, around the clients. And intensive case management for adults. So, I know that the sheriff has talked about this as well. Intensive case management really is about owning the individual. It's about not just giving them a referral to a service, but making sure that they get there.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, well, yeah, wow, is a great response. That's a lot of information, and just, just from my perspective, and maybe it is just to get a perspective, because we talk about being 50th in the country in mental health services, and I look at that number on page five that talks about $39 million, I'm like, wow, that's a lot of money to me. That seems like a lot of money. So, apparently, we're way behind. So, is it federal funding getting to the state? Is it state funding that's short? Is it local funding that's short as it relates to some of these national numbers? And, you know, then the second part of that would be, what kind of metrics are we using to see what job we're doing with the monies we're getting? So, I see, I heard some of them in here, but I just...
So, in terms of the funding, I'm not 100% sure. I would probably think that there's more federal funding available, but I don't want to commit to that. In terms of the, I'm sorry, in terms of the metrics, we do, we have dashboards for all of our programs. So, we monitor that, and we work with our partners, and we review them either on a monthly or quarterly basis, however it is that we have set up those parameters with our partners.
Well, just so that we're getting to levels, I mean, the idea would be, you know, where would we have to get to in dollars to get higher up in that ranking? Where would we, where's the shortfall? Where is the shortfall in our system? And you talk about a few gaps in here, but just, I have a hard time getting perspective. We're 50th in the country. Well, this seems like a lot of money, but apparently, it's not. So, just trying to get better feel for where we need to be, and how do we go about getting our representatives engaged in this area?
Commissioner, this does not count our money that we put in, that Pinellas County, that you all put in. This is state, and I believe also federal. So, we're 50th in the state, I mean, I'm sorry, in the country of getting money in. It does not include our funding.
Oh, and Linda, it's part of her presentation, but I think Dr. Cho is up next.
Okay, just a second. Commissioner Welch has a question.
Madam Chair, Daisy, this is great information, and it's a lot to absorb, and just understanding the acronyms, I think, has been helpful on a lot of this. One of the issues we talked about a lot for several years is exchanging data and data sharing, and you've got the Health Information Exchange as a gap. Earlier in the presentation, you have the Strategic Information Partnership as a grant. Is that addressing the same issue?
We may be able to integrate that and look at it as well.
And the work that Tim has been working on for, for some time in terms of data collaborative, does that tie into this, or is that different?
It's really not the same. So, the data collaborative provides data to us to run reports, to look at gaps, but it doesn't, and I see April a lot here, CEO from Directions, let's say, her information doesn't necessarily talk to Suncoast, to Barbara's information. So, you all provided funding a couple of years ago for Care Connect, right? You probably remember that, Care Connect. And that was more for referrals, so they can refer and, and make sure a client got from, you know, Directions to Suncoast, let's say. But as far as their health information exchanges and all of their information, that is not fully baked. So, that is something that we're working on. And the Foundation for a Healthy St. Pete is, we're going to be doing a collaborative lab using some of their funding, so they've really stepped up to help us, and I know Dr. Cho's got, did I steal your thunder? Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. So, what I'm going to present is the Health Department's involvement in behavioral health, and the question is, why is, why are we involved? Number, number one, because it is a public health issue, it's a public health crisis. What we've seen over the last three years is a decrease in life expectancy, and one of the contributing factors have been substance abuse, as well as suicide. So, it certainly is a public health issue, and it really bleeds to other things. You really can't have a good physical health unless you have good mental health as well. It really goes hand in hand. And then, some of the issues that we're seeing in our community are related, with root causes being attributed to both mental health and substance abuses. So, starting with the, our partnership with the county, we do, are the provider of the Indigenous Healthcare Plan and the Healthcare for the Homeless. So, you can see the number of clients we serve over the past year with a lot more encounters. In terms of referrals, we work with Directions, we have, do a subcontract, and over the past year, we did refer close to 950 to Directions, and at given time, there's about over 1,500 clients in Directions receiving care. We've also partnered with other organizations to address the substance abuse issues, and I think Daisy mentioned some of the grant and funding sources, working with Operation PAR. We, we referred over 430 clients for medication assisted therapy, as well as counseling for substance abuses. In terms of what we do on intake, when we see a new client, and when a new client comes to our clinics, we do initiate a, we do have a universal mental health screening on intake. It's done automatically with our intake personnel. We use the various tools out there, the PHQ9s, the mood disorder, substance abuse screens, and when any of those screens take positive, we do an automatic referral to the appropriate organizations. So, we do have a great partnership with Directions, and what we've implemented with this partnership is an integrated model, really having that mental health counselor on site. So, if there's a crisis, if there's an immediate need in terms of mental health issues, we can have that direct relationship, that direct referment to, to care. And when we look at any safety net or program, we also, we, one of our goals is to defer any ER visits, deflect, and what we've seen over the past year is actually some great decreases. So, from '17 to '18, we saw a 22% reduction in all preventable medical conditions with a program overall. And we also saw a 29% reduction in hospitalization due to severely persistent mental illnesses. So, this is one of the indicators, I think Commissioner Eggers mentioned some of the outcomes that I'm watching, but this is one of the metrics that we do track. And ultimately, I think the benefit of this program, and really, the Indigenous Healthcare Program overall, it provides that access. One of the, two of the priorities here in our community in terms of health is ensuring that there is access to care, ensuring there is access to medical, dental, and mental health, so it does meet that, but also meets our other priority of mental health, as well as substance abuse. Now, I know this presentation's mainly focused on adults, but I do need to mention some of the work that we do with our youth in partnership with the Juvenile Welfare Board. We do, we do have a school-based clinic at five of our sites, and within those clinics, we have somewhat of the same model we have with our Indigenous Healthcare Plan. We have that integrated model to have that Suncoast mental health therapist onsite at least three of the schools. So, again, if there's a crisis issue that arises at the schools, or got forbid a Baker Act, they have those resources onsite to address it immediately. In addition, we do have a pretty robust maternal-child health home visiting services, and namely, with through our Healthy Families Florida, as well our Nurse Family Partnership, we again, partner with Suncoast to provide mental health services, really to address those new mothers with the post-partum depression. We provide mental health depression screenings, as well as mental health counseling and support groups. I don't mention it here, but I do, I did present, the last presentation at the Board of County Commission, I do mention the school nurses as well, and I thank you for your continued support of that. But again, at the schools, these nurses serve as that first line, they're the eyes and ears of the schools, and I don't have the numbers here today, but, but we've seen markedly increases in referrals to mental health, suicide prevention, as well as substance abuses, abuse referrals with the nurses now, now in place. So, from a population standpoint, I think one of the strengths in what we do in terms of public health is really monitor some of the health outcome trends in terms of health data. And you can say that suicide is a huge issue in our community, but do we know the extent? So, that's what we wanted to educate, and that's why we created something like this, working with our partners here in our community. In terms of the extent of the suicide, we do have a rate, I think this is a three-year rolling of 18.1, which is higher than any of the larger, largest seven counties in our state. You can see some of the demographic, to the graph on the left, that it's three to one in terms of males, you can see the age demographics, but also the youth, to where the recent behavioral health surveys showed that 25% have considered suicide in high school students here. And then, on top of it, coming up with a plan in terms of awareness, in terms of education, looking at some of the signs and symptoms to look for. So, again, working with our Zero Suicide Partners of Pinellas, really looking at for those signs to watch out for. And it's also about partnership, really getting the right people to the table, really coming up with a strategic plan to address some of those issues. We've been involved with the opioid task force for the last two years, and what were the reason we got involved in something like that is because we were seeing an increase in opioid deaths. You can see here in 2015 that we had 150 deaths, and that jumped up by 33% to 204 in '16. We're waiting for the final numbers of 18, but we are suspecting some higher numbers as well this year. So, how do you tackle something like that? Again, it's getting the right people to the table, making sure that we have some priorities to focus on. So, what we've done is focused on five priority areas to the right, looking at raising awareness about opioid deaths, decreasing, reducing deaths by increasing the access to the antidote and naloxone, increasing access to addiction therapy, because if you look at anything, if it's opioids, if it's heroin, crack, it's, everything goes down to addiction. So, addiction therapy and making sure that they do have the appropriate counseling, they have the appropriate therapies in place. And then, decreasing the supply of opiums, working with law enforcement, as well as through policies, and then making, ensuring, lastly, that there is a data group working on real-time data. So, what we've done was developed a lot of goals and objectives to tackle some of these, that we've developed these subcommittees to focus on those priority areas, and they've done a lot of great work over the last two years. And what the advantage of having a group like this is that we can apply for these other grants, and then Daisy mentioned the Strategic Information Partnership, making sure that we do have real-time and usable substance abuse and opioid-related data. And the group has been meeting, and we do have a tentative work plan currently. And we can also use the, as you're aware, that the legislature did pass the Needle Exchange Bill, so if that, if the governor does sign it, it's something that we can be part of that discussion on. So, during our last community health assessment, it was mental health, as well as substance abuse, was identified as a top health priority. What we've done since that time is developed a community health action team with some of our, each of our priority areas focusing on some of the gaps. We've developed, what we did was gathered community stakeholders to see what metrics we want to follow. Certainly, this is a work in progress, we need to continue to revise these as we move forward, but some of the, the metrics and the outcomes that this group is striving towards and monitoring includes the following, increasing that awareness campaign through NAMI's Ending the Silence, increasing the number of trauma-informed communities, decreasing drug-related accidental deaths, as well as decreasing the suicide deaths, establishing and offering universal mental health screening, expanding the access to mobile crisis response, making sure that there are good MOUs and strong relationships with the providers out there, and increase the annual review of existing groups working on, to address mental health care. There is a lot of great groups working on mental health at this time, including the PECAN, including the Behavioral System of Care, the Q Care Team, there's a lot of groups working on this. Yes, sir?
Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you. Can you briefly define trauma-informed communities?
So, so it starts with the adverse childhood events. So, there was this great study a few years ago, a few decades ago, actually now, that showed that people that, in their childhood, faced a number of adversities, such as domestic violence, substance abuse, divorce, and other factors within the, their childhood, it manifested later in life with mental health, as well as physical illnesses. So, what the trauma-informed care in general... So what the trauma-informed care in general, uh, does is take that into account. So they approach treatment, uh, through a trauma-informed lens. Um, and for the larger, uh, community, um, are you familiar with the piece for Tarpon? So what they've created, uh, what, what Robin pushes for is a trauma-informed community where every community stakeholders or high leaders of that community, uh, develops that approach through trauma-informed care. Does that answer your question?
Need to ratchet it down a little bit more.
Okay, fair enough.
So you're saying that, I mean, folks come from different backgrounds and they've experienced traumatic issues and that impacts the way that you service them? Help, help me understand.
Okay, so I, I think there's two advantages for the trauma-informed care approach. Number one, um, when you, when a counselor or somebody's working with an individual realizing that they do have those traumas and adversities, uh, events, adverse events throughout their life, so the, the purpose is that you don't want to re-traumatize them by bringing certain things up or approaching it in a different, a different manner. Uh, number two, uh, you, uh, it helps you realize that number one, it, it isn't just one event, it's a series of events and everything is integrated with the child's, uh, with the person's, uh, life experiences essentially, uh, beyond, uh, that one issue that you need to tackle a lot of other socio, um, the social determinants, essentially, socioeconomic factors, violence issues they may be having at their home. So it gives you a better way to approach those types of individuals.
How does poverty, is poverty a traumatic event?
Yeah, it is probably one of the scores, but I can tell you from a population standpoint that it is one of the, uh, socioeconomic factors is one of the biggest, so, uh, social determinants of health. Um, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, uh, every year ranks sort of the counties and how they're doing among other counties. Um, and, uh, they weigh out some of these social determinants and they give a weight of about forty percent for socioeconomic factors. That includes poverty, that includes education, uh, among other things. So from my standpoint, I, I know we talk about this a lot in terms of, of the downstream, uh, approach, the system of care and how we can improve on it. But what I push for from a public health standpoint is the prevention element. Uh, you, you can fix that system of care and, but if that, if the tap gets bigger and bigger, there's not going to be enough money to catch that. So I would always push for the prevention side of it. Gail may speak on this, but the biggest thing, BayCare, in conjunction with USF, released a report on the suicide death. And the, the slide that, that stuck out to me most is that eighty percent of the successful suicides didn't touch the acute care system. Well, what does that say? It, it says that, that we are not necessarily catching them, we're not doing the screenings that we should. So how can we improve on that? Let's look for ways that we can do better universal screening with our, with our medical community, with our schools, with our other doctors, with our hospitals, and see what we can do to improve that. So that's what I'd love to push for.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you. Dr. Cho, can you just repeat that last stat again? The percent that don't?
Yeah.
Which, which one? Oh, I'm sorry, so Gail can probably speak on this. So, uh, they did a great analysis of the successful suicides. So eighty percent, uh, of the people that committed suicide, um, did not, uh, were never Baker acted. They never touched the acute care system. Uh, it doesn't say, it doesn't give the whole picture, cause what the next set of data I would love to see is whether they've received any mental health services. But I would suspect, and when we find it, I would suspect that still the majority of the successful suicides did not touch, uh, did not either touch, uh, the acute care system or had mental health counseling. But we'll have to get that data to confirm.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Cho?
Thank you very much. Good morning. I'm Linda McKinnon with Central Florida Behavioral Health Network. Thank you very much for asking me to come today. Hopefully I can figure this out. I went the wrong way. I'm sorry. Uh, just a few Florida facts. Um, and, and I know I'm going to just, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but there was a question regarding the funding for Florida. And just to let you know, as you see, um, DCF funding, which is for indigent care, it's for people that don't have any other resources to cover their services. The amount that we receive is about thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents per person. That is for everything that starts with prevention, all the way through acute care, residential treatment, and every other service in between. Um, the fiftieth in the nation is basically state funding and federal funding and Medicaid. So, uh, Florida is not a Medicaid expansion state. One of the things that is not reflected in these funding, um, the data that we've given you and that the county gave you is the funds that come through Medicaid. Those come through plot, private insurance plans, and they cover probably about fifty percent of behavioral health services, mental health. So that is not reflected in here. You can see here, there was another question about what do we do about it? This is something that we spend a lot of time in Central Florida trying to educate our legislators about. Although you can see, and, and I think that the system has been fairly successful in the last few years and the legislature of increasing funding to services, but because of our population growth and, uh, per capita spending, really what has happened is that the funding has decreased considerably since two thousand. And it would take in this, in our particular area, over a hundred and nineteen million dollars to get back to the funding level that we were at twenty years ago. This is just another graph, sort of showing the same thing. These are available for your use. Please use them however you would like. Uh, so just briefly about managing entities, for those of you who don't know us, we were created by the legislature approximately ten years ago. There are seven managing entities in the state of Florida. Central Florida manages fourteen counties on the west coast, where the red area there. And through our contract with DCF, we serve about a hundred and forty thousand people a year in treatment services. The managing entities are all nonprofits. We are mandated to operate over, uh, a, a, less than a five percent administrative or operational cost. CFBHN, actually, our, um, operational cost is about two point seven six percent currently. Uh, we are tasked to manage systems of care at the local level. And primarily, one of the big differences between managing entities and managed care or the healthcare plans is that we are responsible to our communities. Those are our stakeholders and our shareholders, and we have to work with each community to try to develop and work collaboratively on the development of systems of care that meet people's needs, given that particular community. So Pinellas happens to be very different than many of our other communities. We have other communities that may have more of a comprehensive behavioral health system in one agency. Pinellas has a lot of different agencies. We are one of the only areas in the state that has a standalone crisis unit. Um, and so that has created particular, some particular challenges, um, in this community, which is why a lot of the conversation is about care coordination, is about how to help people move through all of the wonderful services that we have here, um, and, and be able to, um, get the service that they need at the time that they need it. We're also responsible for working with our provider agencies to, uh, assure that they're all using evidence-based practices, um, and bring innovative kind of solutions to communities, understanding that we have, um, constricted resources. So we have moved to bringing telehealth to many of our communities. Our providers are doing that, thinking about ways that we can stretch the dollar to meet people's needs. Here is our funding. The total funding that we receive for our fourteen counties is a hundred and nine, almost two hundred million dollars annually. Um, again, that sounds like a lot, but when you take that down to the people, it's about thirty-seven dollars a person. In Pinellas County, the resources that come to this county are, uh, just over thirty-five million. I will tell you that Central Florida's Board of Directors, um, about eight or nine years ago, opted to use, um, an equity formula to try to assure that all of our communities within our region are equitably funded. Pinellas County, um, actually receives a bigger portion of funding, um, than the other areas in our network. A lot of that is due to very successful advocacy from the community in receiving special projects, um, over the years. Our equity formula does not consider those. So we consider the base funding that comes in that is ongoing, not one time. We get a lot of dollars that come for a year, may come, go away. Those aren't considered in that formula. The board made a decision, we do not take money away from communities. So, um, Pinellas did not lose any money in this. When we do receive new, ongoing funds to our base, those are distributed according to the formula, um, and so some communities may receive a bigger portion of that fund. Um, but it's, 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 it's a fairly complicated process that I'd be happy to talk about more if you'd like to know. These are our providers. I think you saw on Daisy's slide as well. Um, we have a very, um, large provider network, and I think we, we contract with many of the same providers as the county, uh, and work together to assure that those services are, um, funded between us. That's one of the things that the Pinellas Integrated Care Alliance has really moved towards is looking at our contracting processes, um, our requirements for our providers. The state has very, very difficult set of regulations that are, and, and in hoops that our providers have to jump through. We have over thirty-seven outcome measures that they have to meet, um, annually, and we do have a scorecard on that, which I will show you in a minute. Here we are on our, you will see, uh, the, we have a scorecard. We used to, um, had a fund that we were able to actually, uh, give providers checks for being on our five-star provider list. We no longer have that ability, but we do have an event annually that we celebrate, our five-star providers. As you can see in Pinellas County, all of the providers under contract with Central Florida perform at a very high level. In prevention, we serve about thirty-eight hundred people, mostly children in prevention, mostly substance abuse prevention. These services are provided both in home, in schools, in community centers, parks, et Crisis services, I think you, you heard, um, a lot about that already from, uh, Daisy and Lourdes. Uh, we contract with PEMS. They receive close to six million dollars for adult mental health and about two point three million dollars for children's crisis services. Uh, and detox, I know there's been a lot of questions about detox. Pinellas County receives dollars for detox. Um, and they receive those dollars, it, pretty much, it's, it's, it's the same percentage as other communities receive dollars. The difference is, is we have, in the Suncoast region currently, we only have, um, two secure detoxes. Um, one is in, in Hillsborough with Axe. That's a thirty-bed, uh, facility. And then we have one in Sarasota. That detox, uh, secure detox is primarily funded through the county. Residential treatment services in your area, as you can see, we contract with Axe, BOLI, Catholic Charities, Gulf Coast PEMS, um, and Operation Par. And you will see the bed days on there that we contract for. Uh, and I'm not sure if you have additional questions about that?
Yes. Um, actually Commissioner Peters does.
Thank you. Um, on the, you said the, the Marchment Beds in Sarasota are funded by their county. And Hillsborough County, it was my understanding those Marchment Beds were half-county funded too. Is that not true?
I don't know if it's exactly half. Um, I guess, and, and I, I guess I do, I confuse things a little bit. So Sarasota isn't fully funded through the county. They also receive state funds for that. But the county is, really took the initiative to develop a locked facility to provide the funding to, um, build that facility or retrofit it, fit it, and they do, um, support it at a very high level.
Okay. Um, yeah, it was my understanding, I think Hillsborough County kind of did the same thing, but I, maybe I'm mistaken.
And that's probably, yeah, many, many years ago.
Yeah.
Um, again, in the state, I believe currently, and I, I could be wrong, but it's, I think it, there's seven locked detoxes throughout the state. So they're more regionally based, unless a particular community has, has taken it upon themselves to, to resource that.
Thank you.
May I, I have a question. It goes back to your, um, slide forty-nine, which is the twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen funding.
Like me to go back?
Yeah. Well, you don't necessarily, it's just... So, um, this might be a question for you, or it could be a question for our staff. When you told of the general fund and grant dollars and then had a total of county and state, uh, sources, your figure was almost forty million dollars. Is this thirty-five million dollars in addition to that? Cause the numbers wouldn't all add up. I'm just curious. The thirty-five million dollars that Central Florida Behavioral Health, is that included in the county's figures or not?
I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
Wouldn't add up.
She's including children on there, and I was, was only for adult. That's why her number's higher.
Okay. Got it.
Uh, we have some special programs that are funded through, um, either state grants or special initiatives that, um, Central Florida is doing with the state beyond what, uh, Daisy spoke to you about. Uh, we are collaborating within our communities to bring what's called ROSC, which is, um, Recovery Oriented Systems of Care throughout our provider networks. So that is the idea that we treat people as if they can and will recover and ha, can go on to lead meaningful lives. And there are a lot of different approaches that, um, our provider networks take to assure that. And we do a lot of technical assistance and training on that. We have a special, um, grant called Healthy Transitions that is for this community and, uh, Hillsborough County. It is, Suncoast Center is our primary provider in that. That grant is geared towards young adults. Uh, kids usually between sixteen, twenty-five to twenty-five, and, uh, providing a very different approach to mental health services. So developing a community and a lot of peer services, a lot of social services to engage, uh, young people who are experiencing critical mental health issues so that they don't fall into, one of the things that I think happened over many, many years unfortunately, was we, as a system, became very good at creating dependency. Uh, people came into the system, they had a, a, maybe a psychotic break, young in life, and there were never really approaches to get them back to a meaningful life. We may have treated them and medicated them, but then there was discussion today about activities, things for people to do, volunteer, um, activities. So we are trying to work with our young adults that are experiencing those kind of breaks to not have them go down that path. It's been a really successful grant. Unfortunately, the grant is coming to an end. We have received, uh, information from the state that there is enough funding to help fund it through next June, but, um, we want to find ways to continue that program. We have the, um, foundation which you heard about with, uh, the Pinellas Integrated Care Alliance, with the Foundation for Healthy St. Petersburg. It's been really a, beyond the people that are being served, which we found out amazing things that Daisy talked about. I think one of the most important things about this alliance, it is the first time that as funders, we are coming together and making joint decisions. So Central Florida is no longer sitting and saying, this is how we are going to spend the state dollar, um, without having input from the county, from, from the health department, and from our other stakeholders. from our other stakeholders. We are very focused on working with the sheriff, on expanding opportunities for people that are in prisons. We know that sixty percent or more of people in the jail are experiencing mental health or substance abuse problem, and so, the sheriff here was really wonderful about five years ago. He's the first sheriff in the state that agreed to download his arrest data into Central Florida's data system. That comes in nightly, and it alerts us if there is someone in the jail, that we have already as a person receiving services throughout our network, so that we can try to alert providers and intercede in a timely manner. And we also started with the sheriff, the Marchment Project, where in PAR sends a clinician into the Marchment, the facility, I don't know if it's really a facility, the place where Marchments are currently taken now at jail. They go in every day, and they screen people. Our thought in the beginning with the sheriff was that everybody was going to wake up and go, I want to go to detox. And so, that did not occur. People wake up and they want to go home, take a shower, get their car off the road. So, we were able to, we tracked that, and one of the things that we found is although it does not appear a real high utilization of people going directly from jail into treatment, within forty-five days, about fifty percent of the people that have been screened and received an intervention service at the Marchment pod in the jail, actually do come into services. So, we think that that's pretty successful at this point in time, and continuing to try to develop that. This is again, just more information on Recovery-Oriented Systems of Care. We've really increased our use of peer specialists. Peers are people that, with lived experience, that are in recovery, either from substance abuse or mental health crisis, and they receive forty hours of training, and then have to have close to fifteen-hundred hours under supervision before they can sit for their certification and become part of the workforce. It's been incredibly successful. Peers are really good at working with people, to help them access services, to help them understand that there is life for them in the future. And it's also helping somewhat with our workforce issue, because we spoke about the psychiatrists, there's also a huge workforce issue of just getting clinicians into the field, and so they are wonderful extenders. One of the issues with that, which we took to the legislature this year, is a lot of people with lived experience also have experience where they have been arrested, or things that have happened in their personal life, that currently might make them ineligible to serve as a peer. And so, we are working with the legislature to try to look at ways that we can get those people qualified more quickly. If someone had, for instance, a DUI ten years ago and has been in recovery, how can we get them to be able and eligible to pass through all the background screens that are I think I told you some about the Healthy Transitions, so I'll just move through that. And here are outcomes for that. I think you'll see there that we also have extremely good outcomes for the children and, or the young adults in Healthy Transitions. And with that, I thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Watz?
One definition question, you got a slide with the services, and one that wasn't defined was fact, F-A-C-T?
Yes. That's Florida Assertive Community Treatment Teams. Those are teams that are, were designed to be hospitals without walls. So, they provide, they take up to one-hundred people a year, and they provide very intensive community-based out, wraparound services. They, the team includes a physician, a nurse, clinicians, peers, clinicians that can deal with co-occurring disorders, and also has funding attached to it for housing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lynda, it's nice to see you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Gail Rider, and I'm the Vice President for Behavioral Health at the BayCare Health System. What I had prepared for you today is the detail in regard to our suicide, I will reference that. You do have it in your packets, I believe, so please reference it. If you don't, I know Lourdes has it, and she can share it if you'd like, but let me start with saying, if you don't know BayCare, BayCare is a fifteen-hospital system over four counties. Here in our Pinellas County, we have four of those hospitals, and in four of those hospitals, we have a hundred and six psychiatric beds, ten of which are pediatric, thirty-six of which are geriatric, and the rest are adult. But what I'm going to talk to you today, what I'm going to talk about, is what a health system has to do with the problem of behavioral health. And remember, that behavioral health is a combination of mental illness and substance use disorder. From the health system's perspective, this is a disease, just like any other disease. But what I can tell you is, what you heard today is absolutely true, and I couldn't be more proud of working with the colleagues that you heard from today. And I will also start by saying that Pinellas County is responsible for some of the most innovative ideas, and have become a pilot in the four counties that I work in. I was in Hillsborough County last week, and they were tackling the similar issues, and I reported that Pinellas County has cracked the nut, and they're going to be coming over to learn from what's going on here in Pinellas County, so I think everyone should be very proud of what's going on. Let me start with talking a little bit about the Community Health Needs Assessment. All not-for-profit providers have to do a Community Health Needs Assessment. We've done them for the past six years. This year, BayCare convened all the not-for-profit providers in a survey, along with the county. No mystery to any of you in the room, that mental health and substance use is going to be a major problem. Pinellas County has the highest suicide rate, or one of the highest suicides rates, in the state of Florida. With that, we knew that the last three years. We did a research project with USF. If we're going to move the needle on suicide, I, it was my opinion, that we needed to know more, so I'm going to share with you some of the highlights of that report. In that report, we have hotspots. We have Pinellas County down to the zip codes of where people tend to suicide. So, now we know communities that we need to look at. We also know that it is men, it is men, forty-to-sixty-five-year-olds, all using guns, and have a past history of the military. We also know that there are, there is a growing group of women suiciding. Most of them choose to do overdose, but they are also using guns. What we also did in the report is we took a look at some of the social determinants. We took a look at census tracts, we took a look at, what do we know about these communities? And I'm just going to give you some high level, and if you'd like me to come back at a later time and do a deep dive, I'm happy to do that. I'm very passionate about this, as you can tell. Needless to say, in the areas where there are the highest rates of suicide by census tract, we have large numbers of liquor stores, and large number of gun shops. In the census tracts where we have lowest, we have highest rates of churches, and protective factors. So, there's a lot that we can learn from the information that we have. Poverty does not play a role, at all, in suicide, from the data that we have. There's more work to be done, but I will reference the system of care here that Pinellas has. They have taken suicide on as a major issue, and are further ahead than most any other county around their work on the clinical side. But as Dr. Cho shared with you, only eight, twenty percent of the people are presenting for care. So, how do we get the people, the other eighty percent, to present, and how do we do it? And that's the work that needs to get done. So, moving forward, we will have a national expert here come to BayCare in November to talk about the other states in the United States who have a higher rate, and what they're doing, and what can we learn in order to create an environment where people feel comfortable looking for care. Those who did, the twenty percent who did show up for care, it did have an impact. And the ones who showed up for care and did suicide, the suicide didn't take place for a year or more after the intervention. So, the intervention did matter. So, that's a little bit of a teaser on our suicide efforts, but we know more than we ever did before, and I thank my colleagues at USF for helping us get that done. In addition to that, from a health system's perspective, we have worked diligently in our emergency departments. Obviously, you've heard the statistics about people coming to the emergency departments being Narcaned. That's an opportunity. People are at their lowest point at that part. Working with Operation PAR, we have one of their peers in our emergency room at St. Anthony's. He's very popular at St. Anthony's. He's become probably the most popular team member in that whole hospital, because he does work that no one else does. He knows how to engage these patients, and what we do is we get them on medicine-assisted treatment, and we get them right over to Operation PAR. The data and the numbers are staggering, but it was very important to get our emergency room doctors comfortable with giving treatment, and then moving them over into treatment. It's been a very positive relationship, and I don't know if Ken is PAR or BayCare, it doesn't matter. He's doing a job, and that integration of our community with our hospital has been, and that's one team member, made a big difference. The other project I will share with you today, I just looked at the data before coming in, we have sixty patients in the BayCare Health System today, who have IV antibiotic drug problems. They shoot up their drugs, and they get endocarditis, which is an inflammation around the heart. These people can die, it's very serious. But if we don't pay attention to not only their medical needs, but their behavioral health needs, and their addiction needs, these people will eventually die. So, after many, 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 many months of working with Operation PAR, we sat down and we developed a new program that is probably unique, and we'll be presenting it on the national stage in the next couple of months. But what it means is, that we have our medical doctors approaching these patients, encouraging them to go into treatment. Many of them resist that, but we, our psychiatric consultation team works with our medical hospitalists. We have PAR coming in, doing an evaluation. We move them into care, and from us, they go directly to Operation PAR. Our home care team goes in and manages all their medical needs, and our BayCare primary care team is there weekly to make sure that they're okay. The results of that program, with all of that work, of all the patients we've sent, I will tell you that most of them are women. Men are still resisting, they're resisting coming in for care, and they're, we just got to do something about the men. But those who have gone into care from our system, all but one, have made it through and are committed to their sobriety. We've saved their lives. That's the kind of work that our community and our hospital system get to do together. One last comment, and I know Lourdes really wants me to talk about this, I'll do my best. Like all of you, you are all caring about the trauma that we're living with mental health and substance use. It's a national problem. Even with all the good works that you heard today, we still have mortality rates that are climbing, both in suicide and with addiction, not to mention the trauma that people go through in their lives when they deal with family members. I can't imagine any group of professionals in this community working any harder than they are right now. So, what I will tell you is, the BayCare Board of Directors, right after the Marjory Stone and Douglas, we're not doing enough in mental health. That was their battle cry. We're not doing enough, and we need to do more. So, obviously, our president and CEO, Tommy and Zena, took that very seriously, and we started meeting. And in the end, we came up with a decision, and the decision was, this is more than any one organization can handle, this is a community problem. So, we hired a consulting firm, and we brought twenty-seven individuals from around four counties together to talk about this problem. Not only did we bring the normal and customary healthcare providers who live it every day, but we brought our business community to the table. I think it's going to take a public-private partnership to move something this big. I think Lourdes talked about, this is a monster problem. It is a monster problem, that has never seen the death and mortality that we're seeing today. So, with all of that, BayCare has convened a group, and has decided to launch a four-county initiative, where we're going to take a look at the gaps, and see what the public and private sector can do together. So, I don't want to say more than that, because I know Mr. and Zena would like to announce that on June twentieth, and talk about what, some of the things that we'd like to do together. I think everyone recognizes that this is very difficult, but what's going to make it more difficult is if we don't work together. That's going to make it more difficult. So, we don't want to duplicate services, we want to find the gaps and we want to fill them, and we certainly want to make the people who need the help understand where to get it. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions. One last comment, I think what we fail to recognize, that with the erosion of the funding, or the erosion of the workforce, which is, in my mind, the biggest problem we're going to face, is the patients have changed. We're not dealing with the same patient cohort even five years ago. They're medically complex, they've gone without care for so long, that takes a different kind of treatment. But what you heard here today was meeting the patient where they are, which you should be very proud of. It's making a difference. So, with that, any questions that I can answer about what we're up to, and what we plan to do?
Any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Watz?
I have a question, I don't know if it's for you, but back in an earlier slide, I think, Lynda, you mentioned that we're fiftieth in funding per capita, and you mentioned Medicaid expansion. So, Medicaid expansion could be used to fund mental health services?
Yes, sir. Medicaid expansion would very much help with that. One of the things that states that have expanded the use of Medicaid have been successful, there is a new model that is very successful, and it's called CCBHC. It's taking a community mental health center, and they are a full primary care clinic, as well as a community mental health center. One of the things that's really positive about that, is it allows a very different sort of prospective payment mechanism, as well as being paid the higher rates that a federally qualified health center could get, and it has allowed, the states that have done that, that have that kind of model, it's really allowed for very good integration of care, and for doing much more care coordination, much more engagement of people, more of the things that we know need to be done.
What was that acronym you said?
CCBHC, and it's...
Is it Victor?
CCB, as in boy, HC, and if you're interested, the National Council for Behavioral Health, their website has a plethora of information on that.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Barbara Dare, I'm the CEO of Suncoast Center, but I'm here to really speak to you as the moderator of the Behavioral Health System of Care Meeting, the work group. We came together a little over two and a half years ago, some providers got together and said, we really need to bring everyone together to better coordinate our system of services, and work more collaboratively together, and try and solve some of the issues that you've actually heard about today. And we do have some recommendations on what's going on, so you've heard from all of these people, and they've covered a lot of what I could say, so I will get right down to what we're doing. We have over a hundred people that are invited to this meeting every month, and we have about forty to forty-five people who attend every month, and they're from all areas that are impacted by behavioral health issues, which, as you have heard, is pretty much everyone. So, I'm going to be going through this flowchart with you. We have selected at... We have selected, we have done a multitude of work groups and have made a lot of changes within our system of care through this meeting and group that we have. We have selected, over that period of time, two major initiatives. One, you've heard briefly about, which is the Zero Suicide Initiative. And through that initiative, all the behavioral health providers have come together, and they are using the same suicide assessment and are doing the same safety plan with clients who are showing signs of suicide. I have to tell you, that is a major accomplishment in our community and probably in our state because there are not a lot of providers that use that same kind of tool. And we're seeing a difference in the care. We continue to do clinical training, and we're, as you saw, Dr. Cho did some infographics on suicide, and everyone is coming together to work on this problem, which is a very serious problem. So we're very proud of the work we're doing there, which continues, and we're getting ready to do some more community initiatives. And then the other major initiative is the Behavioral Health Central Receiving System. We've been working on this over the years, and a couple of months ago, we presented to the group a, this flow chart, to get their buy-in, to see if this looked like what we wanted to kind of design for our community, and it was unanimous that everyone wanted to work on this. Yesterday, we had one of our monthly meetings, and we presented some detail, which I will share with you as I go through this flow chart. So we're, if you start on the far left side, an individual presents for care, we, it doesn't matter whether they call, they text, they email our vision for this, or show up at any facility, we want to be able to provide them the care that they need. We talked yesterday about how we would like to come up with one single telephone number that every person in this community can call to access behavioral health care. Now, we would work in concert with 211 and do whatever we need to do. There's still some research to do on that. But this would assure that, let's say they showed up at Sunco, they wouldn't necessarily need services at Sunco. There may be another level of care of another organization they would need. So we would do the same kind of assessment and review to make sure that every person got the services they need. This would also be 24/7, which is not something we currently have. And access to care is really important, and we want to make sure everyone gets to the right level of care at the right time. So for a centralized receiving system to really work effectively, you can see on the top and the side, we've got the deeper end, more intensive services, and then on the other side of the grid, we've also got outpatient services. And you cannot have either one way out the other. We need both, and it needs to be really kind of balanced so that we get the right service for the right person at the right time. Unfortunately, over the years, one of the things that the state and other systems have not done was really invest a lot of money in the foundation, which is just traditional outpatient services. There's been more focus on the deep end because really that's where the higher costs are. So we really need to look at the cost for all of those areas of care. So when someone accesses this through either showing up at one of our lobbies or calling on the phone, we're going to screen them first for the least costly service, the least intensive service, which would be community-based services. So that's the level of care. And then we're going to obtain a number of documents and items from there. We're going to do a standard screening. We're going to have some, we're going to select some standard assessment tools, although many agencies use different ones. We're going to use the universal release of information. We're going to do a safety plan on everyone we treat, which started with our suicide initiative, and we're going to, you know, get them to consent to treat. So we have agreed as providers at our meeting that even though everyone has totally different assessment plans, and some of them are quite lengthy based on all our funding source requirements and accreditation sources, that we are going to work on finding a piece of that assessment that every single provider can utilize similar to what we're doing with the safety plan now. And we think that will make a big impact in being more consistent in the care that we provide, no matter what the organization someone shows up at. And then from there, over time, we can develop, maybe eventually get to where we're all using as much as possible the same assessment plan. So going across the top, if they are not eligible for community-based services and really need secure facilities, that would be either voluntary inpatient or involuntary services. Then if they were involuntary, we would go to the transportation plan, and then as you move down, we have either, they would either go to a Baker Act receiving or addiction receiving. So our vision here, and there is work being done on this, is that we really want co-occurring secure beds. We want whoever shows up for secure inpatient to get the services for both substance use and for Baker Act and not have to decide if they're a marchman, they go over here, and if they're Baker Act, they go over here. 45% of PMSA CSU Baker Acts have a substance abuse disorder at this point anyway. So it makes sense to have co-occurring beds, and there are some examples in the state in which we do that. And it's quite effective. Actually, BayCare has that system in Pasco County. Obviously, this includes step-down to detox. When they're ready for discharge, then we see what other more intensive services that they may need to help them stay out of readmissions to the inpatient setting. And then as we go further down, one of the nice things that you've heard about today is, since we started our system of care meeting, the county, and thank you all very much, and the state, have added some funding for some services that really help in this area, that are more intensive and help individuals that have some more serious and persistent mental illness. So that, as you can see under the engagement services, you can see all those services are fairly new additions to our system of care that have occurred over the last couple of years. So as you move down the flow chart, where it says needs acute intervention, down to the virtual or onsite intervention, then we would move again from that, getting them into any of these specialty programs, with the goal always of getting them to regular outpatient, least expensive care. As everyone has mentioned, treatment really does work, and it makes a big difference. More people we can get early on with outpatient treatment, therapy sessions, medication only and if needed, the more we prevent all the trauma and the high-end cost to our community in both personal and financial ways. So again, engagement and re-engagement is something that we talk about in the system of care on a regular basis, depending on the organization and the type of service they provide. The no-show rate for services can be as low as 30%, but as high as 80%. So we really need to get these people into care because what happens is, they always show up again later and in a higher level of care, which is what we want to avoid. So the other piece that we decided at our meeting yesterday is that we really believe that a centralized case management system is going to be the most important thing that we do with intensive level of services. So the providers have all agreed to take, to start this process, and piggyback on what the PIC team is doing, is to add a case manager from each of our organizations to, in a centralized manner, to start dealing with some of these individuals that need this care to keep them out of the deep-end system. So that's really a big improvement that will occur in the system with all of the things that we're working on. So we have a lot of work to do to put the meat into all of this, but this is kind of what we're working on, and we got, again, unanimous approval from everyone at our system of care meeting yesterday to move forward with these issues and items. So the other thing that we did is, on the next slide, we started a services inventory. So we wanted to list the levels of care that we feel are important for a system of care, and so those are listed here. It goes all the way down, and at the bottom, we added, through our conversations with our entire group, we have to consider specialty populations, and that there are other providers of behavioral health, not just behavioral health providers. You know, the law enforcement has part of a system, Public Defender does, the school system, the VA, there's a lot of other behavioral health, and all those are invited and included, but we have to make sure that we're all kind of working in unison together. We identified what we knew, basically from all the needs assessments that have occurred throughout a couple of years, things that need expansion for us to look at, and we have not prioritized any of these. We just know that some expansions, some may need more expansion than others, but that that is necessary. And then we have a column that really is needed development. You've already heard about many of these, the drop-in center. Technology is something that behavioral health providers do not get any funding for, and we know there are a lot of amazing technological things we could do to rise the care level for our entire population, not just those that have touched the system, but we don't have the resources to implement those or purchase them. Also, we've done a lot of work on admission and discharge from the hospital. We all use telehealth. We have a telehealth site at the CSU where the person who's being discharged actually connects with a therapist at an outpatient agency, and that helps with them feeling more comfortable with going to an outpatient site. We're working on making sure we have special liaisons in all the areas where we have a lot of clients, emergency rooms in hospitals. And workforce development has already been mentioned as an issue, and then, of course, you know, transportation continues to be an issue in our community. So that is what we're working on in the system of care, along with our Zero Suicide Initiative. And, you know, we have all these subject matter experts in the room, which is really critical to deal with this brain disorder and this very complicated disease and system of care. And I couldn't be prouder of everyone who attends that meeting and comes on a regular basis and brings everything they've got to help resolve some of the issues that our community members are facing. So thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody have questions? Well, Barbara, thank you. You've been a leader in this area for many years, and we're very appreciative. If you were going to look at this list for the needs expansion, what would be your top three priorities?
Oh, gosh.
I mean, we obviously can't get state funding for this. We can't get grant funding for all of this. We can't, we have lots of unmet needs, but...
I guess what we've talked about at the system of care, I mean, I have my personal list, but that's self-serving. But I guess, when I think about the system of care, obviously combining the marchman and the CSU beds, I think is really critical. I think that we spend too much time talking about it, and we need to just solve that issue and move on to bigger things. I think intensive case management, I've always talked about, is really a critical service that is needed for a particular population, and I think it can go a long way to help everyone. And then I think we really need to lift up some of our outpatient services and make those more available. We do talk a lot about access to care and what's available, and if we can get people in more quickly, right when they need it and they call, we can divert them from some of these higher-level services. I don't know if everyone would agree with that, but I think that would be a really good start and would make a big dent in what we're talking about here.
Okay. And I'm kind of curious with, you know, it was noted that we have a lack of psychiatry available here. Are you finding it difficult, and Gail, too, for finding folks who will be providing the services, hiring people?
I can say right now, we are doing a really good job. We have a lot of child psych time, and we have adult time, but all it takes is for one of our psychiatrists to leave and go somewhere else, and in the private sector, they pay a lot more money, and then we're going to be short. So we, right now, it would be 28 days for the average person to call and get a psychiatric evaluation at our site. Now, if they come in through the CSU system, they get that psychiatric evaluation much sooner, but it can be higher and it can be lower. It just depends on the availability that we have. And I know everyone struggles keeping psychiatrists, and also licensed therapists are really difficult to get as well.
Come on up, Gail.
We have a team of them here. So I think a couple of things about our community around psychiatry. I think that in four years, 40% of the psychiatrists that we enjoy here in the community will retire. And there's no one to come up behind them. In addition to that, we have a very unique community, and the VA is really attractive to a lot of the psychiatrists, so we're losing them to the VA.
And licensed therapists as well.
Absolutely. And then on top of that, what's even more interesting is the growth of telebehavioral health and the excitement that some of these providers get about working from home and having, you know, flexible hours. So we're losing a lot to very exciting telehealth opportunities. So our, you know, so we do a lot of telebehavioral, you do a lot of, you know, but what sits behind the telebehavioral is a real person. So it's not like you can just plug it in and get, you know, like an Android. But, so, so we really have to pay attention to the workforce. If anything brings us to our knees, it's going to be that.
And a question maybe for both of you is, have we found some efficiencies in our system?
I think we have.
Because I, you know, in being involved in the periphery of this for many, many years, with so many different service providers, and the other thing that I thought was interesting was, in just a few cases, and I know it's impossible to provide us all this data at one setting, but we didn't see that much in outcome analysis. We saw, like, Dr. Cho gave us one, and Linda gave us one about our outcomes. So if we're investing all this money, are we really helping people and are we really making a change in their life?
We are, and I think there are a lot of outcomes. We just didn't really have time to share all those with you today. The one thing I can say, I've been a CEO for 20 years now, and I've been in this community for almost 40. I'm probably the longest-serving CEO in this community at this point in time, after Nancy Hamilton retired. And I can say that in all those years, in the last couple of years, I have seen all the providers work more closely and more effectively together than I ever have before. We have aligned our services to where we rarely compete with each other. You know, PAR does non-secure, PMS does secure, a couple of us do outpatient. If there's very serious substance abuse, they go to PAR. Parsons, they're very serious behavioral health, to Sunco or Directions. I mean, we really kind of have a flow that works really well. In the past, I really believe there was a lot more competition among us, and I think that was really derived by some of the funders because they said people need choice in services, and I think it made it difficult for us to collaborate in the way I think would be most effective, which is one of the reasons we decided to begin this Behavioral Health System of Care monthly meeting. As providers, we were hearing about all these sort of services and changes that were happening, and we're like, where is all this coming from? And like, we need to be, we're the subject matter experts. We need to bring everyone together so that we can all plan this together, and we are, in fact, doing that. And that, I think, is very hopeful and is the best I've ever seen.
I just have a comment about outcomes.
Sure.
We've been chasing outcomes on the medical side for a long time. When you look at behavioral health or mental health issues, there's not a lot of outcomes out there. What is a good outcome in behavioral health? Right now, at the healthcare system level, there's, there are no external reported outcomes that anyone feels good about. So what is an outcome? Someone staying in treatment for a year, is that a good outcome? Staying sober for five years? What is a good outcome? And I think that's something that the field has to work on. And remember, you know, one of the things about this disease is the ability to adhere. And the very thing about the disease encourages people not to. So it is a very different kind of journey that you take with people who suffer like this.
So to follow up on that, I just want to add that I think that we're going to be challenging our group to come up with a couple of consistent outcomes that we want to measure. Interestingly enough, I was just at a national conference, and a woman who was the HR director for Walmart gave a talk to all the behavioral health providers about what we need to do, and she goes, "I don't care what you pick. Pick two outcomes. Do you think the health systems had an outcome when they first started doing their care? They didn't. Maybe they won't be the best, but you'll have something, and then you can build from there." And I feel like I need to bring that challenge here, and I think we need to just select a couple of things consistently across all sites and just start, and then pull in whatever's happening nationally and make sure they all blend together.
Linda?
In terms of outcomes, one of the things that we've seen on a system level is since the state started funding care coordination, which is both the case management that we talked about, more centralized owning the person. What we know is that in central Florida, we have 5,000 people across our region that would meet the criteria for that, meaning they've had three or more inpatient admissions or jail within six months. We have the resources to serve about 500. So what we've found is the people that get that, we are saving close, for every dollar that's spent, we're seeing a savings in acute care or jail time of over $3. So it's, you know, in terms of a monetary outcome, it's really been very successful. It's just, again, the resources will only support a small cohort of the people that it could really impact.
Finally, and I'm sure others may want to ask some questions, I know that the state of Florida, led by Governor... of Florida, led by Governor DeSantis' wife, is looking at the whole mental health funding and system and so on. Since you now have seven entities that are managing this, I guess, help me with what they're going to be studying and what are they looking for? And Linda, you may be able to answer this the very best.
Well, we haven't had private meetings with, with the First Lady yet. We did meet with the Secretary of DCF about a week ago. Some of the things that they're really looking at and she is really looking at is how do we extend our reach through, through more collaborative work with other community partners, for instance, faith-based initiatives and those kind of things to really grow that. Other than that, there's no specific plan yet of how that will be addressed. I will tell you that the managing entities, we meet weekly. One of the complaints when we first were formed, at that point, the department's viewpoint was competition. And we know in healthcare, competition doesn't work. So, we, all the managing entities were brought up differently. We had different IT systems, we had different processes. We've worked really diligently within the last five years to bring that together and a more unified approach across the state so that we're working similarly with our communities and also to, to develop the IT capacities that are necessary. Right now, the state is going through a monumental, they're building a new data collection system for behavioral health. And it has been probably the, the primary focus that we've all had to deal with in the last year. It's, it's disconcerting in some ways because the state is, this system, our managing entities, we pay off of the data, so we only pay for what we know, those services that happen. The state system was never like that. They are moving towards that, where we will only be able to pay by data that's accepted into the state system and meets all of those criteria. That's a big concern for a lot of our communities, our community mental health centers. They're all on, they have their own EHRs and they have their own vendors and those vendors' ability to make all of the changes necessary to, for data to be accepted into the state system is questionable. They can't do it within the timeframe. So, one of the concerns that you may hear, we've been working really hard with the state to assure that we can continue to pay our providers, but July 1st, this, this system really goes live and there is a concern about the ability to assure that we can continue to pay for services that may or may not get accepted into a new IT system. Ultimately, it should be a great thing because it will start giving us much better information about outcomes and as compared to the amount of money that's been spent and the services that are provided, so we'll be able to start developing better clinical pathways. But as we go through this bumpy transition, you may hear cries of help that we're, we're trying to avert any issues with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
I'm, I'm really, I really appreciate all the presentations this morning. Linda from Vacca, really, that's unbelievable partnership. I think that's, your idea of public-private partnerships really intrigued me. I, you know, it seems like the number that struck me was the 80% of those that commit suicide haven't engaged the system. So, does it stand, and a question, does it stand to reason that 80%, this really wasn't a, I'm just talking in general now, but is 80% of the folks that don't engage in mental health as well, is that assumption fair? Is that jump fair? And what do we need to be doing to, I, I think there's just a lot of people who don't even know that the services exist, whether it's the person who's suffering the problem out of embarrassment, stigma, whatever, or their family, their friends, their community. You mentioned the church community. Dr. Cho and I have talked a little bit about that element. So, outreach to me, education outreach, not only, not only to the end user perhaps, but to the surrounding family. I just don't, I just don't hear it out there as much as, you all live it every day and you're in the weeds and you're battling and you're doing all that. But I'm wondering how we're doing, what can we do to have a better outreach, I guess is my question.
Well, you're asking the million-dollar question, you know, which is what we're all grappling with. And one of the things that's already been happening in this community for many years is the whole mental health first aid. If we don't have a professional army of people out there, what we need to do is to create that lay army. And that's what mental health first aid does. It allows the people who go through that training, and it is formidable, it's an eight-hour training around how do you help someone when you find them in a mental health or substance use distressful state? Right? So, you can't have a professional everywhere you want them. So, mental health first aid has been done over and over again in this county and we have more to do and we will do more. There's a, an adult version and there's a pediatric version. So, if we can decide we're going to be a community of a lay army, chances are, we can spot things that these people won't say to a professional and we can help them and encourage them to get the care that they need. So, I think that's one thing. What we have heard from Colorado and from other states who have a monumental problem with suicide is that they've done things that are sort of out of the box. They had meetings with the gun shop owners and they said, "Let's talk about this." And we've gotten, and they were all at the table doing their work when they sell these guns and, you know, protective factors and information. You know, we're going to have to think way out of the box around how the community does risk mitigation, right? What do we do to mitigate the risk? All before we get to the providers, right? So, you're going to hear a lot about stigma busting, right? How do we do that effectively? On the good side of stigma busting, we believe, at least those of us in the clinical community, we have busted the stigma amongst the young people. They are really interested in coming for help. So, that's a good thing. The problem we're having with stigma busting is that older generation, you know, and in the slides, you can see the suicide as the ages go up and we're talking about some of the sand soldiers and the Korean vets and the older group who just, you know, they just suck it in, you know, they just take it. So, how do we approach that? How do we do that? So, those are the kinds of things that we're going to talk about. Let's talk about the churches a minute. Very powerful. They play such a role in the community because they create a protective factor of a community, a community. People feel that they're connected. People feel that they can talk to people. So, it's exciting to bring everybody to the table to tackle something that everyone thought was a, you know, a medical and a clinical issue and it's not, it's a community issue. So, we look forward to doing those out-of-the-box type of things in the communities where we know where the hotspots are, because now we know.
I know, and I just, I just started with healthy kids recently and one of the areas that they're concerned about is touching those kids or families that don't have the health insurance for their child. And one of the big issues is our dollars for just getting the word out, whether it's through public service announcements or just getting the word out that it, there's something there that exists. So, I don't know if that's an area that we need to touch on too in the same...
Well, I think Barbara touched on it. I think that what you're going to hear, at least in the big project also, is that navigation is a big issue, you know? When you have a cardiac event, what do you do? You go to your primary, they send you to a cardiologist, right, and you're on your way. But when you have an issue like this, it's very complex. Where do you go? Even though we do it, we talk about it, we do community meetings, until you face the issue yourself, that's the navigation we need to solve. And it's as simple as, call this one number and someone's going to talk to you live. Maybe that's the thing we really need to do. So, there's a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think this is really great and I agree that what we're doing is really exceptional, especially in the last couple of years with the empowerment team and the, and the pick teams. It's, it's a different, it's absolutely, Barbara, you're right, it's a different place today than we were five years ago. And, and I can't, you know, nobody can argue that, but what we didn't look at today is the cost. And Linda, where you said the return on jail and back to a Baker Act or acute care is about $3 and I would, I would argue that you're significantly low because you haven't taken in the account of the transport. You haven't taken in the account of medical release transports, you haven't taken in account the medical release process. And so, I would argue that is probably closer to $10 to $12 versus that $3 that you, that you said. And so, what I feel is we didn't really look at, you know, data such as the 911 suspected overdose this year in Pinellas County. And so, the data I have is old and I know that next week, we're going to have a meeting and the next quarter, data will come out. But at five months, we were at 70% of the total calls of last year. So, and the year before was higher than the year before that. So, where Manatee County was the epicenter for the opiate crisis several years ago and their numbers have gone down, Palm Beach was also an epicenter, their numbers have gone down. In Pinellas County, because we've not really attacked the addiction side of this, I think our Baker Act and mental health side might be okay, but our addiction side, I don't think we've done a really good job at tackling that because for three years in a row, we've seen huge numbers and this year is going to be the highest number yet in suspected overdose, 911 calls and transports. And so, based on that data, which unfortunately, we didn't get a presentation on, and the data on Narcan administration, which again, is significantly higher this year versus last year. So, when it comes to acute care on, on that issue, I, I don't think we're hitting the mark. And we didn't really talk about that. And I, I agree and it was stated, and I was glad to hear it stated, that, you know, what I believe we need, and Barbara, I agree with you 100% and I've been saying this for six years since I was in the legislature, that a Baker Act facility should be able to do a marchment. There's, there's really no difference. That 72-hour of care is the same, however, none of our Baker Act facilities are licensed to do marchment. The other issue is if you look at the data, our Baker Act facilities are, you know, PEMS in particular, but all of them are already at capacity or exceeding capacity, so we haven't looked at the capacity of beds on what do we need if we start licensing them on marchment? How many more beds do we need? And I absolutely agree that that medical model with the mental health model is the ideal way to go. And I'm seeing around the state where they're putting an FQHC with a center receiving facility and therefore, we can draw down higher reimbursement rates for psychiatry, for pharmaceuticals, for all different things. So, if we were to take a center receiving facility, have one, make one wherever we have a facility now, expand it and expand an FQHC, we have a funding stream, Hillsborough County is doing this, is about to start, other counties are doing it. Hillsborough County got really creative, they put affordable housing on their, on their facility at their campus and so, so they've got regular rents coming in plus affordable housing rent, so they have places. Hillsborough County's done a really great job. I think Orange County has done an outstanding job at center receiving and getting people moving where they need to go. The data goes with it. So, to me, that combined system is the ideal way to go. What does that look like in Pinellas County? I'm not sure. But based on the, the data and the research that I've done just looking at Pinellas County compared to everywhere else and the data on the explosion on this opiate and overdose problem, whether it's suicide, women trying to commit suicide, whatever it is, we've got a huge problem that is growing year after year after year. And so, I, I have sent a proposal to create some kind of center receiving facility. Ideally, it would have an FQHC attached to it. The Health Department would, you know, can maybe handle that or whoever it is that does it. You've got that medical side. I think the comorbility would be way better. For six years since I started working on this, I've had my constituents, Pinellas County residents, calling me sometimes three to four times a day when I was running commercials to now about three to four times a week, sometimes a month. Poor Linda gets stuck with my phone calls all the time, "Help me get a bed, help me get a bed." And what I can tell you is never in all those years and all these phone calls that I've gotten, mostly mental, mostly addiction, mostly dual diagnosed, I have never been able to get a bed in Pinellas County for detox or residential treatment, for a dual diagnosed treatment. Never in all the phone calls I get have I been able to get a bed. And so, that's really why I'm so passionate about this because I've had to go to Hillsborough County, I have to go to Pasco County to get one of our citizens in a bed. And when you look at the data and it's climbing and climbing and climbing, I feel that the cost that we're spending on the transports and the emergency rooms and how many people we're losing because we didn't, they didn't make it, that I, I just feel that it's time that instead of, we've been talking center receiving facility for way too many years. We've been talking about marchments for way too many years and I just feel it's time that we make the investment and the return on investment is significantly higher than Linda said at $3 to $4 for every dollar sent. It's significantly higher. And, and so, I know I threw out some aggressive decision packages, but I think it's time to really get serious and force the conversation before we lose any more people. And I would love to have the opportunity to not have to call Linda and know that I can get a detox bed or a residential bed in this county and not have her find a way to get me into another county for one of our citizens. And it's been going on for years and I think it's time that we, we really get serious about this conversation. We talk about marchment beds, whether it's, I think, center receiving with an FQHC is the way to go. I think it's the responsible, most fiscal, practical way in which we could do it. I think we have great partners in this community. It's got to be twofold. You have to address the acute care and then you also have to, and it has to have that coordinated care. But we also have to do something when it comes to prevention and accessibility, whether it's expanded telehealth or whatever it is. I think there's two layers that have to be done, but I think it's long past due for us to do something to ensure that we have some really good, get into that access of care. Let's address the acute care and it's going to take us a really long time when the sheriff in one year has 1,500 marchments in the jail. That's not including the amount of people that are being put into POD 6 and not at the safe harbor and not at the jail. And how many people are being put in at West Care's shelter that didn't get a marchment act? And that doesn't include the people that are still at home that should be getting marchment act. And we've not even let the citizens know that there is such a tool to use because the state has refused to fund it. And just like Sarasota took the initiative through the county and Hillsborough County took the initiative through the county because the state has neglected to do it, I think it's time we, we bite the bullet and we do something about it. I, I don't want another phone call and I get a lot of them with people begging me to help save their loved ones' lives. And most of them, substance abuse is probably the number one reason that they're calling me, but almost every one of them are dual diagnosed with mental illness. And so, I really would like to take this conversation farther than just seeing all the wonderful things we're doing because we are. And, and the system is significantly better than it was five years ago, but we are way missing the boat when it comes to substance abuse. And the data is here and we just didn't look at it today. And if there's anybody out there that disagrees with me, I'd love to hear your opinion. Or even if you do agree with me, I'd love to hear your opinion because I'm not thinking that I'm doing this in silos and I've worked with every single one of you and talked with every single one of you over the years. And I just, that's what I believe, so.
Yes, Commissioner Long and then Commissioner Welch.
Well, I see Jim Fogerty sitting back here and I know that we have had several conversations over the last several years on trying to get the transport issue resolved in terms of the frequency. I think I remember all those conversations. Some of them were pretty heated actually in the beginning. And I'm just wondering if when you do your presentation on all of that, are you addressing any of that as well? Jim?
I can tell you, Jim, myself, Dr. Jamison, Daisy have all been working on this issue. One, to try and have folks not have to leave PEMS as an example to get medical clearance because that's a transport, right? So, those are issues and we, and we have the data and the... So, those are issues, and we have the data, and there's always more data that we can get. Just yesterday, we talked about sharing that data, I know Commissioner requested that with Central Florida. But we are looking at the data of the folks that we are working with right now to look to see how we can do better. And again, I think just even changing how we do medical clearance, which is something that we're working on with PEMS, so people don't have to continuously be transported. But, you know, sometimes we can have discussions with folks, but they also have to be willing to make some changes. So, that's where we are at right now with some of that.
So, how do we facilitate that they do make the changes?
Well, again, that is currently what we're working on. And we have, you know, I'm not an MD, right, not a psychiatrist, but we do have those folks at the table to make sure that we're doing this appropriately, safely, and it's the right way to go.
I know that there was mention in this central receiving system, the universal release of information, safety plan and consent to treat. Does everybody have the same forms? So, I mean, and everybody has it already in their system?
Yeah, I can tell you that's something that we worked on very diligently through our Top Thirty-Three Behavioral Health Pilot. It took about a good year, to be honest. It was a lot of work and folks coming together, legal challenges, that type of thing, but they're all using it now, the universal release.
Okay. Commissioner Welch?
Well, this has been very informative. It reminds me of when we entered into the housing discussion years ago, and even the issue of chlorinated water. I mean, you've got to learn the science and the technical details, and y'all are helping us get there, I still have a ways to go. But on the issue of the beds, I think, Barbara, you mentioned substance abuse and mental health beds. And the first question I have is, you know, we've been talking about using the Act facility and having some beds in Pinellas County. Would those be dual-purpose beds, for lack of a better word? You're saying no. So, I need an answer on that. And the Hillsborough beds, is their funding only for substance abuse and not the mental health piece of it?
Hillsborough has a grant also, the state grant for a central receiving facility. So, in essence, what happens is people come into that, it's acute care only, it's not central receiving for everybody, it's acute care. They come in and they're triaged there on the same campus, the secure detox is located on the same campus as the CSU. And so, people are triaged and they're sent one direction.
Let me stop, because, so detox is substance abuse and CSU is mental health?
Yes. Although, almost all of our CSUs, I would say forty percent of the people, at least in them, it's a co-occurring disorder. So, they're already, whether they're licensed to do it or not, they're already treating people.
I'm trying to catch up. Co-occurring is-
Co-occurring is mental health and substance abuse, yes.
And what percentage was that?
Probably at least forty percent, forty-five percent.
Okay. So, you know, I think Commissioner Peters has a lot of good points, I think we've been improving over the years, we've got those gaps that y'all have identified now. You know, a question we've had a lot along is why can't we use that facility that's in our county now? So, I guess in my thinking, in the short term, I'd like to get there. But I'd like to also, to Commissioner Peters' point, see a plan for how we move forward and implement something that, you know, meets these needs in our county, including how we fund it going forward, just like we did for housing and transportation. I think we need a plan for attacking this mental health and substance abuse problem and funding options for doing that, which includes options for if the state steps up or not, and we've been waiting for that for a while. But, so I'd like to see a plan. I certainly see the need and the fact that we're leading in so many of these categories is troubling. So, I think we're making progress, and I'm looking forward to a plan to see how we move forward.
Commissioner Gerard.
Well, and I would agree, I'd like to see a plan come from this group. And I love the idea of that public-private partnership, if there's some way to do that. Sounds like you've been talking about it for a long time, too, and you probably have an idea of what your ideal would be if somebody would pay for it, so let's hear it.
Yeah, I think that we have the experts at the table, and I also want to commend Lourdes and Daisy and Dr. Cho for the amount of grants you pulled down and starting some new programs and working cooperatively as a group, so I just have to mention that. Thank you. Linda?
Oh, thank you. In terms of public-private partnership, one that's been very successful for us is more related to employment initiatives, programs like Vincent House. We have some other areas where we have actually been able to tap into, not foundations, but, well, in some cases, foundations, family foundations, but also private donors who have been very instrumental in funding the startup for those facilities. Same thing with housing, where they've come to us and said, "We will help support the development of the infrastructure and help to support the cost of operations for a year or two years if you will then take your state funding or work with us to get state funding to help support that," or county funding. So, a lot of it's been more related to either housing or employment, where we've really been able to attract those private donors into the system.
Another question that I have is, you know, I've always heard over the years that actually, Orange County or Orlando has the best program possible. Is that, is that true? If you looked around the state, would you say that theirs is the model?
Theirs was the first. So, I don't know that it's the most successful at this time. It's held up as a prototype because it was the first one in the state. There's been a lot of innovation since then, so there's a lot of good models, I think, to look at.
And then, going back to Commissioner Peters and Commissioner Welch, why, I don't think you've answered the question about the Acts. Are we going to be for sure going forward on that for the ten beds? And then, secondly, I guess I'm still puzzled, why with the other, the Baker Act beds that we have in this county, why we can't co-use them for Baker Act and marchment?
That would be, PEMS would really have to apply for that certification. They do have that for children, so they have some-
They already have, are doing it for children.
Again, that's not going to answer all your questions, because PEMS is almost always at capacity. Some of that is not recent Baker Act, some of that is really related to people waiting for state hospital that sit on that unit since the closure of the SRT. So, that, there's a capacity issue, and so, we would need more beds. But they, I don't think that there would be an issue, it would be working with them in terms of applying for that dual certification. Your question about the ten beds, my understanding is, is the Acts is moving forward with opening those ten beds. They are not, at this point in time, going to be funded through the state dollar. We had a proposal with Acts to be able to do that. Part of what they're dealing with is their utilization in Hillsborough County, and we've been working with them to ensure that that utilization is appropriate. So, we did have an agreement with, among ourselves and Acts to move dollars to the Pinellas location. Hillsborough County, I think, just like Pinellas County would be, was not in support of moving dollars that are targeted to their county for detox services to another county. We obtained somewhat of an agreement that we would pay, right now, for acute care services, we buy capacity, so we buy a number of beds. We weren't able to say, okay, we are going to reduce Hillsborough's capacity by ten beds. We talked about going to a fee-for-service approach, where Acts could bill for services in both counties. They were not comfortable with that at this point in time of assuring that their utilization would be able to pull down all those funds, and really, they need those funds because they have to staff by a certain number of staff by the number of beds that they have. So, even if their census isn't up where at a hundred percent, they still have to staff for that. So, there were concerns about that, and they chose rather to keep the funding where they know that they're paid for those thirty beds, and they will be billing it out of the Hillsborough location, but they are opening the ten beds in Pinellas.
Gail?
I guess what I want to say is a little bit of something about detox. I do run a detox and a CSU in one location and have been for many years up in Pasco County. It is a remarkable program, we're all chasing the right thing, but detox is not treatment. I guess I have to say that out loud. I just feel like I need to say it. Detox is the start of a journey, and you hope that the people who go through detox take the journey, but many do not. So, unless we put detox and we nest it in a group of the continuum of service, it's not going to be as effective as we want it to be. I've been working with PEMS now for quite a while to get the model that we run over to PEMS. We are diligently working on that. It is not uncomplicated, not everyone can do that kind of work, you just have to worry about the workforce. Who is going to be your addiction doctor? How are you going to get those people pulled together? So, I think the model that we would like to support and would love to bring to Pinellas is that no wrong door, everyone gets treated the same way for their illness, and then they're connected hard, hardwired into the next level of service. We do not want to waste those valuable three days if people are not going to take this journey that's really going to work for them. So, and it's, I will say, for people who work in the addiction field, I say this with all my heart, it is the hardest part of medicine. It's the hardest thing that people do, is to get people to take that journey and stay sober and continue on their plan for many, many years. So, we haven't, it has not gone unnoticed, and we really need to bring the workforce together in a way that's going to matter for the patients that enter the program.
Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. I'll make a comment about that, and I agree with you, Gail, completely. However, if I go into a Rotary Club and I ask the people in the room, if they're not in the mental health field, "Do you know what a marchment act is?" Nobody knows what it is. So, our families in this county don't even know that they have a tool in which they can intervene and at least get those three days where their child, or their husband, or their brother, or their spouse can get detoxed out and get a counseling session, then possibly get on that path. So, the citizens in this county don't even know we have that tool, and we can't even tell them we have that tool, because currently, if we do a marchment act, they go to jail for six to seven hours till they dry out, and then they're released. Yes, PAR is going in there, and they're giving them a counseling, and they're giving a brochure, and, you know, like forty-five percent of them within forty-five days are following up. But those are only the people that the police picked up because they were a danger that might step onto the street and get killed, right? And so, this isn't even touching the family members that are calling me saying, "Please save my loved one before they die," because they don't even know that the tool exists, and even if they did, we have no place to take them, because we don't have a marchment facility in this county. So, when you look at, we're the big gaping hole. And yes, if we don't have the wraparound services or a pathway for them to go to get treatment, which, again, I have had to go to Hillsborough County and Pasco County for every person that called me, you're absolutely right. But right now, we got nothing. And that's the bottom line, is right now, we have nothing.
Are you finished? Okay.
Well, the question's Commissioner Peters. I'm a little confused when you said, when you made several times the comment, "They don't even know we have the tool." So, my question is, what is the tool when we don't have any beds to begin with?
The tool is in legislation that we can do a marchment act for someone who is a danger to themselves or someone else because of their addiction. That's the tool.
Oh, but we don't have-
But since we don't have a marchment bed, the only tool, if someone wants to use that tool, the only place they're going to go to is jail. And they're not going to go to jail for seventy-two hours, they're only going to go to jail for six to seven hours, because we don't want them withdrawing in jail, going through detox in jail. So, the sheriff releases them as soon as they're sober, so six to seven hours later. And PEMS is, or PAR is going in and they're doing a counseling session with everybody in there, Monday through Friday. They're not doing it on Saturdays or Sundays, but on Monday through Friday, they go in there and they do a counseling session, and they refer them to a rehab program, which is nice, and we're getting a good outcome on some of those calls. But the people that are going to the jail are people that the police picked up that were in the community that might step in front of a car or something like that. So, it's really not a tool for the general population unless their loved one is about to step in front of a car and maybe get killed.
So, then are they booked at the jail, and now they have a record?
No, they go into the drunk tank at the jail, they're there six to seven hours. If they start going through any kind of medical problem, and then the numbers were there on how many people get transferred out, four hundred and some in a year, got transferred out because of their medical condition, so there, they end up in an ER. But we still had, I forget the numbers, it was on a slide, I don't know how many, what the number was, how many stayed in the jail. But that's only the ones that the police pick up and bring in. So, remember the guy I mentioned, the Treasure Island guy that cost us ninety-two thousand dollars? Sometimes he's taken there to the drunk tank for six to seven hours, sometimes he's taken to the homeless shelter and he sits on Pod Six, sometimes he goes to the homeless shelter in St. Petersburg. But again, he's one of our hardest ones, right? He's Million Dollar Murphy, right? He's costing us. And really, when you look at the population, my gut, and I can't guarantee the numbers, my gut is about twelve percent of the population are consuming ninety percent of our resources. And we know that with the high utilizers, the thirty-three, and we saw the huge return on investment with the thirty-three. My issue is, if we had the marchment act, I think, if we had a center receiving facility and marchment beds, I think we can get those high utilizers, just like we did for the thirty-three, within that system. But we, like I said, when I have a family member call me, "My grandson, I'm taking care of my grandson, his parents are in jail, I need help, he's doing drugs, please help me before he dies, I know he's going to die," they've never heard of a marchment, and I can't tell them, "Do a marchment and send him to jail for six hours, it doesn't give them anything." So, instead, poor Linda gets my phone call, "Please, please help," and we end up sending him out of the county. So, the tool is the marchment act. The problem is, because we don't have a marchment facility, we can't even utilize that tool unless they go to jail. And that's my, and to me, that's very ineffective, completely ineffective, and you're missing that whole family that has their loved one, and they're just desperate because they don't know what to do.
Question? Just again, having this, continuing the conversation, I heard somebody say, I think, that we have thirty beds in Hillsborough County for a marchment facility, and does that include the ten that we're looking at up in North Pinellas County?
No.
Can you turn on Linda's microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
What you currently have in your county, they are not marchment, they're detox beds. So, the difference is, they are not secure, they're not locked. If somebody wants to leave, they can leave. You have thirty-five licensed beds-
For detox.
For detox. Seventeen of those beds are paid through state funding, through Central Florida, and the others are funded either, I guess, the county and through Medicaid or private insurance.
But those are the detox beds that we have?
Yes.
Not, that's not the ten beds in North County?
No, that would add to it.
Okay. But those would actually be marchment, that would be a marchment facility?
Yes. Now, they are, they have to go, they have to retrofit, fit that facility, they now They now have a whole lot of new standards that they will have to pass through in order to get that certification through the state. I know that their application is in, but that would be an additional 10 beds when that opens, which is Marchment. So the difference is they're both detox, one is locked, one is not.
I got you.
So the 35 detox beds are not locked?
No.
No.
Okay.
So in the meantime, so let's say we get those beds tomorrow, which obviously we're not, who is eligible or qualified to send people to utilize those beds? And is there such a thing in the short run of creating some kind of virtual receiving facility that we can, so that we're all talking and sending? Because there's only 10 beds. So how does that, how does that get coordinated?
Right now, what is happening is a series of meetings with the sheriff. I think they're, they're trying to start small so that the sheriff, the people that are going to the Marchment, to the jail, they would be medically triaged between the sheriff's nurse and the accepting, you know, program. And the sheriff is going to transport to that facility. So it's starting small. I don't know that will address Commissioner Peters' concern related to families having access. If a family files for a Marchman Act, what happens is the police pick that person up. And so we'll probably, you know, go, still be able to go through, through that facility, but the way that they're planning to start is through the people that are going into the jail and then triaging from there where the sheriff will transport.
Can I, can I finish that?
Let me just finish.
Well, I want to explain the rest of it. Because I've been sitting in on the meetings, sir. So the sheriff is going to work on Pod 6. So he's going to continue to have PAR come in and do the assessments with the people in the drunk tank. And then he's going to strictly start using the Pod 6 folks who are severe addiction issues. And those will be the ones that will be assessed and Marchmented, so it won't interfere with the grant that PAR is doing with the folks in the jail. So that would really be targeting the high utilizers that are going into the homeless shelter into Pod 6. And they would be transported up. I talked to the CEO of ACTS. She only has funding for one bed. Since they're not getting the funding for the 10 beds this year, she only has funding for one bed. She said she's going to do everything she can to try and do those 10 beds. She has no idea how she'll do it or where she'll get the money. So that was as of Thursday last week.
She did commit to me this morning on the phone.
10 beds are open.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a sheriff's program right now where the sheriff and a, I think it's somebody from PEMS can go out to community homes if there's a situation. They go out and they assess and they interact. I would think that those interactions, you're still using the sheriff's office, you're still using a licensed mental health counselor. Would those not be eligible as well? Would they not perhaps be a place where they would be identified for Marchment and go there? Why would it have to necessarily be reacting? Or is this just because you're talking about that pilot to start?
It's a pilot to start and because we know if you open up the floodgates, the need will be way beyond the capacity. So it's really just a starting point to try to make sure that it's all worked.
And that's why I was asking about Hillsborough having 30 beds and they're not utilizing all of them, or are they?
Again, it's an average. So for Pinellas County, the average utilization of the detox beds is 75%. In Hillsborough, it's 65%. That changes every single day. So I get alerts from the Hillsborough system when they're full. That comes to me automatically. On any given day, depending on the hour of the day, they're over capacity. But at that midnight census, which is where they have to report on, they're not at that capacity.
So when you're, when we talked earlier about a plan coming from you all, it might, I'm just trying to get a fix on that number that we would ideally look to build if we were to go down the road. Are we looking at 50 beds, 30 beds? Are we looking, or is that hard to pinpoint?
That's hard, but I would say at least 30.
30 new?
Just sort of off the top of my head.
A physical facility that has room for 30 beds? That's what you're talking about?
At least, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, and this is just really a stretch, but I'm curious about our chief deputy who's here representing the sheriff. And given that we have a hospital out at the jail, is there any possibility at all that there could be potentially room to open up some beds in there? Or is that building that used to house, I think it used to house women, I'm not sure if I've got that right, but isn't there another facility that isn't open, but is there that maybe could potentially be used for this kind of thing? I'm just asking, stretch, you know?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here, so I'm at the end here. But I think the sheriff answered that question about our medical facility. We have 432 beds in that facility for medical issues with our inmates. So I don't believe that's, that's just, that's not even where we house them. We do have a separate area. I don't know, we have a couple of facilities that are closed, if you will, over time. I guess that's a discussion. I couldn't answer that now as far as would that be a viable option? I don't, I don't know at this point.
So, Madam Chair, since those, since there are facilities out there already built, they're not being used, could we at least have a discussion about whether or not it might be possible to retrofit them to a point where they could, it could be an honest to God, real Marchment facility? And it seems to me with the building already built, there's some kind of infrastructure there. It could be a less costly way to address the issue than starting all over from scratch. And the other thing that I think is good about that location is the fact it is centrally located in our county and not all the way, you know, up north from nowhere. Just an idea.
Commissioner Gerard.
Well, I just wanted to say that may be ideal in terms of location, but you know, to go back to Dr. Cho's presentation, this is a medical issue, a health issue. It's not a legal issue. It's not criminal behavior. And to have a facility there on the criminal justice complex, I think would be not the message we're trying to send or not the kind of services that we are hoping to put out there. You know, if we could pick up those buildings and put them someplace else, that'd be great. But at that part, but I'm just trying to find a stopgap.
Well, I appreciate that, but once you retrofit and put a program in there, it's going to be there for a long time and that's not the place for it.
Can I weigh in?
Linda.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty with this. PEMS is actually working on a plan to, because they do have facilities. We know that they need a lot of restoration, but that is another potential option, I think, is to look at that. They have a lot of land there and they do have some facilities that aren't being used.
Well, I just wanted to, anyone else?
Go ahead, Ken.
Commissioner Welch?
Commissioner.
Can you turn on Commissioner Welch's microphone, please?
I did that, that was my fault.
Okay.
No comments, justice. So do I leave her understanding that we've got 10 Marchment beds on the way and funded?
You have 10 Marchment beds on the way. They are not funded. One of those 10 is funded.
Is funded.
And we are pursuing funding for the other nine? What's the plan?
We are pursuing funding for the other nine through the legislature.
Okay.
And, excuse me, PEMS, I mean, PEMS, I'm sorry, ACTS. One of their things that they are trying to do, and again, this is, this is going to require working through Hillsborough County, all of their beds on their campus are funded, which means that their current campus, which means that they cannot bill Medicaid or any third-party payers for detox. And one of the things that they are trying to do is create the capacity to be able to do that within their agency, which was part of their idea of we'll move 10 beds, that we can bill for 10 beds through Medicaid. And they've done an analysis that they have enough population coming in that they could probably bill Medicaid and receive, you know, services and funding through that mechanism. They will bill Medicaid or any third-party payer that they can for people coming in in this location, I'm sure. Essentially, what they're saying is that they came out and committed that to this county and they are going to go forward and do it. And then we have to work with them and with Hillsborough County so that Hillsborough County is comfortable that they are not losing capacity as well.
Okay, well, yes, Commissioner Peters.
Promise. Sorry. PEMS is a great idea and that was the original plan years ago before the sheriff kind of blew that up. The only issue is it's in a flood zone, so that's one issue. I fully support PEMS. I think they're doing a great job. They've really stepped up, but that is one issue. And just regarding Commissioner Long's comments and Commissioner Gerard, I think if it's behind the fence, absolutely, and I was always opposed to putting it the justice system. However, I have changed my opinion on that because if it's in front of the fence and if it's in front of Safe Harbor, what's on the, what's in the back door, as long as you don't see the back door, isn't an issue. If it's at the front door and the front door is nice and you have an FQHC, if you have a health clinic that you could do both and get greater federal reimbursement to help fund it, to sustain it, and it is a mental health, addiction and health clinic facility, that's a whole different ballgame. Just because it's located on that property, if it's the front door, it's not the same as being behind the fence.
Have our health facility out there, right? It's right next door.
Correct. That one is designated a homeless FQHC.
Well, okay.
But you can have more than one FQHC. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. I believe that our staff outlined the opportunities on page 33 and I see you all will be working towards looking at every, uncovering all the rocks and trying to put the data together and trying to put the system together. And I say this on behalf of the county commission, we appreciate each and every one of you and for what you do for our citizens and we look forward, as Commissioner Welch put it, for a plan.
So, and it's only because I don't know this process, but we went over the decision packets last meeting and then they were deferred and my proposal was 10, funding 10 Marchment beds, using penny money to do a central receiving facility and then looking at the healthcare tax to ensure that there was a funding stream to pay for it. And it was deferred and how does that go? Because you all didn't get to see the whole thing, you got the summarized and it was pretty complex documents that I submitted. Do we weigh in and say, yes, we want to fund something? Do we weigh in and say, yes, we want to see more Marchment beds? I just don't understand, it's deferred now. Unfortunately, I'm leaving the country next week, so I won't be here for your next meeting. But how is, are we moving forward? Is it something I can be confident in saying, yes, we're going to address? I'm just curious if you need consensus, just curious how to do that.
I'm asking Mary.
Absent direction from the commission, the traditional path has been the county administrator recommends a budget coming up here in July. Now, specifically to those issues, one of the issues that from a staff standpoint we have is looking at these different models. Is it an integration of care? Is it an additional layer? And how does this fit in? And we've got a lot of community partners. So from a staff standpoint, I think we believe we should develop this plan more and bring that back to you. Before, we would entertain a proposal to add just a, focused on a central receiving facility and a Marchment. Not that there isn't a need, clearly there is, but that there's a lot of missing pieces to that, to that plan. Now, when we get to July and if the commission wants to say then, you know, increase the healthcare tax or whatever, do fund that and the penny money to build it, well then we could, we could certainly move down that path. But I didn't hear that the other day and, but again, you know, this is also my first time going through this process too, so.
I think, was it Commissioner Eggers or Gerard mentioned the virtual facility? I hate to, I think we have lots of mental health partners already that have facilities. And so as far as maybe looking at a virtual system where they go into their door, it might make a little bit more sense than creating a central facility. I don't really know, but I know we have, like I said, the partners and the experts that we can call upon to develop the best solutions to our dilemma. And whether that can be done immediately, I'm not sure. I, I know that we recognize the problem, but I also am not one just to say, let's throw dollars at it without really having a good, sound plan. Commissioner Gerard, Commissioner Eggers and Commissioner Long.
Yeah, I'd like to see it a little more fleshed out as well, but I don't think there's resistance here to doing it finally after talking about it for 20 years. We just want to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing to do that's going to work in this community. So if it doesn't get funded this year, I mean, the penny money's not available till next fiscal year anyway. If it doesn't get done this year, it doesn't get done this year, but that doesn't mean we're going to stop moving forward on it. I still want to hear from these guys about what's the, what's the ideal.
I get a thumbs up from Barbara, so.
The only other comment, that was one of the comments kind of that I was going to make, but the other one was, I don't want to leave any stone unturned here either. That, the comment that Commissioner Long made about looking at facilities that are in and around, that I think we ought to look at them. I think we talked about how many, how many real estate assets the county has and what do we have out there that could possibly be anything close to a facility, eventual facility? So I just want to make sure that we're giving our planning folks over here, our partners, all the tools they need to come up with a, even if it is a, you know, maybe we build something that's got 15 or 20 beds and we still have the 10 up north, well, that's a lot better than where we are today. And, you know, so I just want to make sure we don't rule out incremental steps versus that ideal situation because it may take us a while to get there. In the meantime, we're losing opportunities, so just open up everything for consideration.
Commissioner Long and then back to Commissioner Gerard and then I'll turn to the side of the table.
Well, I agree with every single thing that's already been said, so I'm not going to, I'm going to try really hard to not be redundant, but there are some folks here who've been involved in government at different levels for a long, long time. And if there's one thing I know, it moves at a snail's pace. We know we have a crisis in our county. We know that it is affecting our young people and folks of all ages. There is no question that living in the world today is not easy. And a lot of folks just don't have the coping skills they need to be able to deal with the tremendous amount of anger that affects almost everyone. All of our families are, you know, in crisis over one thing or another and it seems like we live from one drama to the next drama, drama and one anxiety attack to the next. I don't think we need a raging forest fire to realize that this is not something that we can just push down the road and not have a sense of urgency about. And while I have great respects for our partners and the fact that they are working so hard to address these issues, you know what? Since I've been on the county commission, we've had these partners. We've been working on this for at least six or seven years and we have moved the ball. But I do think it's time for us to put our money where we say our mouth is in terms of how much of a crisis this is. I, I understand the fact that, you know, we didn't put this in the original penny four list. I get that. However, we have However, we have big, huge challenges. I get that. And God knows, I've been trying to do my part to work on some of them. But I don't think we can just, you know, wait and wait and wait to have a plan. And God knows, we can develop a plan. Is it going to be perfect? No, probably not. But we can keep on tweaking it like we do with everything else that we come up with. And we've got smart minds here and smart partners. And I think we can all be pretty comfortable that we cannot rely on the state of Florida or the federal government to come to our rescue. We're going to have to figure this out somehow, some way. We've figured out a lot of other stuff and done some really, really bold things. So, let's be bold. And let's not sit here next year adding up how many other young people or middle-aged people or veterans are dead, because we did not have a sense of urgency.
Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah, you did agree. Just wanted to, three things. One is that I don't think we should take the pressure off the state to take care of their responsibility. I know we're going to end up paying for it anyway, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't keep telling them that it's their responsibility. Two, the jail property itself is in a flood zone. So, we also, we've built up this last project we did there, we had to build off the ground. I think the same thing could happen at PEMS. And I do think that's kind of a natural place for it to be, considering that they already have the mental health component there. And there was a third thing, but I forget what it was.
I concur with you about PEMS. Okay, Commissioner Welch, any last comments?
Yeah, three real quick ones. I've been around Commissioner Long way too long. I typed in sense of urgency. It's right here on my screen.
Thank you.
But the first thing, I would like to get the full packet that Commissioner Peters submitted. I hadn't heard about a health tax option. I'd like to see that full packet. But I do think, you know, my focus is the ten beds, getting those squared away incrementally. But then, let's see a plan with all the options, you know? I think we agree, we need a sense of urgency on this, Commissioner Long. But I'd like to see, you know, does an existing facility make the most sense? The jail campus, as Commissioner Peters said, if it's in front of the fence, like, you know, Safe Harbor and the medical facility, I think that's different than being behind the fence. And we do have that penny that is for these kinds of public facilities. So, I think it was a great discussion there. I've learned a lot. And I know we'll keep that sense of urgency. But in the interim, the ten beds, and then, let's see the plan about where we can move forward. I'm not counting on state money. I've already put on Facebook this morning about Medicaid expansion, but I'm not counting on that in the next eight years. Some things, we just have to lead on locally, and we've done that before.
And deal with reality.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, I wanted to thank Commissioner Peters for the focus on the issue. I think that's the way we get things done on big issues, is having that laser focus. I appreciate the efforts. I think the dual examination or focus on what can we do in the short term with general fund, or what can we do in our programming that addresses some of those, as well as looking at a more structural, long-term, major change, major implementation, that we can solve some of the bigger problems. But, and then again, as others have spoken, and I guess maybe we have received it, but I'd love to see the full package of details on that.
We'll separate it out from the original email and get it to you.
But it's also, if it is a millage increase, how that impacts the overall on the health fund millage increase on the full package, and what that impact is on property taxes all the way through, so that we understand what we're doing.
Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. And I appreciate you indulging me with all of this. I've been working with our community partners for a really long time. And whatever the plan is, wherever it is, whatever, whatever, I definitely think the Dual Baker Act, Marchment Act, I think, is important. And ideally, if a hospital were to choose, because many of the, you know, Orange County is attached to a hospital. So, whatever it is, I think it would do. But what I would say is, ten marchment beds, if we're only targeting Pod Six, barely scratches the surface. And the length of time, and PEMS is already at capacity. So, even if we do the dual license, we don't have the capacity to even capture any more people. So, that's kind of my concern. So, you know, I'm hoping that the staff will consider, if nothing else, marchment beds or ensure that those ten beds are funded, or something like that. You know, not that I want to shove everything to one agency, but if you expand it to twenty, the cost isn't the exact same as it is for ten. So, for ten, it's $800,000 to operate. For twenty, it's only a $500,000 additional, because you've already got stuff in place. So, I just, whatever it is, I just don't want to wait too long. And I promise you, Linda is tired of getting phone calls from me on Friday afternoons when I have a constituent who cannot get a bed in this county. And so, I just hope we don't take too long. And I'm happy to send out the original proposals. I'll have Ashley do that right away, so everybody has them. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you, Commissioner Peters, and thank you to all the rest of the commissioners on this, having this very good work session, and again, the staff. One other question that I just want to bring up at this point in time, because it occurred to me during this discussion, I'm not sure whether anybody's here from the community health centers?
Actually, we have Josie Santini.
There you are. They are the only FQHC presently, other than what we are doing at the Bayside Clinic. Obviously, we ended up, and I'm going to say this publicly, ended up in a very poor place with our partner some years ago, and I don't want to go there again. But, you know, is this something that you all might be willing to work with us, since you have the access to federal funds, to see if we could partner with you on something like this? Not putting you on the spot, Joe?
Good morning, or almost afternoon, Joe Santini with Community Health Centers of Pinellas. And my title is Director of Behavioral Health Programs. And I cannot commit to resources, but I know that Community Health Centers of Pinellas is actively working with the community partners present. We participate in the system of care. We have integrated behavioral health into our primary care setting, working with Sunco Center. So, we have licensed clinical social workers and behavioral health therapists within our facilities. And we participate with the standard assessment tools, including the safety care plan. So, we're looking to be part of the solution in any way that we can, and primarily focusing on early identification before they even get to needing the more deep-end services. So, we're looking at being active partners in helping to solve this crisis.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I can just add, we just met with Elodie, the CEO, and Edward, Daisy and I, last week. We meet with them on a regular basis, and they are very committed to being part of this. So, I'll speak for the CEO, so you don't get in trouble.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Any other remarks at this point in time? Okay. All right. Again, thank you to each and everyone. Really appreciate you.
I'm Sheriff.
Yes.
Just, I want to thank our communication staff and everyone who made the facility look great today. And it's great to be at the exchange.